Public hearing to start the meeting off. So, for those that are here for the Wilmerite public hearing, sit tight. We have a couple of applications that I want to do. This is a regularly scheduled planning board meeting. It's usually the only meeting we have in December, so there are applications that we have to process through. So, bear that in mind and we'll go through it as quickly as we can. First up for the planning board is review of the minutes of December 3, 2012. Does anybody have any additional comments?
It was so long ago.
So long. We're starting off early, aren't we? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of December 3, 2012?
So moved.
Thank you, Peter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Augusta. Any comments? All those in favor?
I think I recused.
You are...
She asked me here, but I wasn't here.
You weren't there.
Yeah.
You didn't come, Ashley.
No.
Take Lyle off.
Right.
Okay. But Lynn voted for it.
Did you tell her?
No, December 3.
Oh, it's December 3. I thought you said it was November 12.
No, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, for old business, we have a request for an extension for New Paul's views. They were approved back in July for the two lot subdivision at 180 days. Subsequent to that, they still have to get some final paperwork finished up on it, so they submitted a request for an extension of it for 90 days. Anybody have any comments on it? Remember back to the summer? Have a motion for extension on the New Paul's views?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Peter?
Was this where they are? What were they doing there? Didn't we have a talk about, well, there is an extension?
Right, this was the two lot subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
And subdivision, right.
Right.
Any further discussions? All those in favor? All right. Ultra Seal on Main Street, we reviewed the project. We were, thought we were going to get an update from it. We didn't get an update, but we have, still have to refer it up to Elsa County Planning Board for their review. So, all I'm looking for on this site plan is a motion to refer the application to the Elsa County Planning Board for their January meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Eileen.
Second.
Thank you, Lyle. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, application review. Burnson Evening, accessory apartment. Come on up. We, I think Stacy's been out to the house and do we have a CO?
And I think we never since 1968.
Yes, I know. She's kind of thinking about it.
Yeah. She also asked me for parking.
Right.
This is, there are copies there for everybody. And there's a slight revision on the plan that the existing office space is going to be used as storage space as well. Just a little different use for that space.
Do we have enough going that way?
Need more there?
Stacy issued a memo out last week on this request for a special use permit for the accessory apartment. It met all the requirements that are associated with 14017. It is less than a 35 percent habitable space. We did ask for room for free vehicles, one for dwelling unit. That's the update that you presented with us tonight to ensure that we didn't have any side yard encroachment.
I got four parking lots or five, so there's...
There, there's plenty of parking. There's at least four, and then there's a garage.
And that space is already paved, right?
It is, yeah. My son's been using it as full court basketball. Tremendous.
Why is it all paved?
And that you propose to remove the closet within the existing bedroom and convert that bedroom into an office. And what you, I don't have that yet.
I think, oh, you don't have that? There it is. It was in one of the little sketches. Is this the top floor or bedroom?
This is the top floor.
This is, this is it.
Okay.
This is the one. See, it's, we're moving the, this is going to be a double closet in the master bedroom, and this is going to become an office my daughter's own. So, that, because it's, you know, they're back to back, half and half now, we're moving it.
Okay. And... Okay, so this is existing office conversion for storage only in the back of the apartment, basically.
Yes.
So you would have to go through the apartment to...
Yeah, or the tenants could use it as storage.
Okay.
I don't really need it. I have some other space on the other side, because we're leaving another strip where my laundry room is. It's going to be my area.
No change in the number of bedrooms, so we don't need the Elsa County Health Department approval for it.
Side yard.
And we have the spreadsheet for the back lighting. So I'll ask the board members, Jim, any comments, questions? Tom?
No.
Eileen?
I do have a question. The orientation on this is, is this way, correct? This is the front of the house with the, this in the front?
That's the front of the house, right. So the entrance is in the back. Right now, there's the double side of those doors.
So that's the bump out right here, this or this, is the little storage building? Or the, what's the office right now? Is one of these, this or this?
Let me see, let me see. It's the front of the house. So, right, this is the upstairs here, and there's a, out here, there's, there's a sunroom in the front upstairs, and it's what's underneath it, which is equal in space.
Oh, so right in here, underneath is this. This is below grade? Basically, the property pitches from front to back?
Yeah, it does. But there is a, you know, there's a window that's above, right? But, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my question.
Okay, thank you. Augusta. Good? Peter?
Is there a setback requirement on the, on the left side here? It's 10 feet. Is it for the parking?
10 feet for the property line.
Front yard is...
It's 20 feet, right?
Front yard setback is 50 feet, so...
No, this, this...
Right there, they can park in the, in the side yard, but not the front.
Okay.
So they can't park here?
Yeah, I don't know what this dimension is to the first parking spot.
It says 20 feet.
It says 20 feet. This is 20 feet, right? From here to here.
Oh.
I think that's the length.
Oh, that's, that's more, that could be more than that, yeah. It's, yeah, it's about 10 feet from this, to the side. From the front, it's, there's plenty, it's 75 foot space, so I could designate the spaces anywhere.
Moved up.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so just move...
You could easily get to 50 feet from here.
Easily. Yeah.
I think probably just eliminate the fourth spot there and make sure that we have 50 foot from the front yard.
Okay.
From back here to here. We need 50 foot.
Okay. I wasn't exactly sure what that requirement was, but I know that, you know, that there's enough space that I could designate anywhere.
To the parking stall, it's 50 feet, or is it to a structure?
Parking stall.
Okay. Yeah, and there's even an additional parking spot that's paved, that's to the, as you're facing the house, the right side of the garage, there's actually another paved area in there, which I didn't even put in. Yep.
Okay, Lyle, anything?
No.
Okay. I think we have all the questions answered. I think we got the numbers up. We have a motion for granting a special use permit for the Marcy Burnson accessory apartment on 29 Fiddle Road.
I'll make that motion with the modification as discussed.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, we usually at, got our planning board meetings, have an opportunity for public comment on, on things that may be of interest to the planning board or of interest to the residents and the town. This isn't the public hearing section yet, but I just wanted to see if anybody was here to make any public comments. Not hearing any, we'll move along to the next one. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on the Wilmerites?
So moved.
Thank you, Peter. A second? Thank you. All those in favor? We have a, hopefully a sign up.
You want me to just get through them?
Yeah. Thank you.
There's only two names on here. Anybody else want to sign up? Everyone's watching us?
Okay, generally, public hearings, we ask for, try to hold you back to five minutes, give or take. I'd ask you to try to abide by that. I will point out that we always and have been accepting written comments right along on this, and we've had plenty of written comments. It must be close to 50, if not more by now. But we do read them, and, as well as the transcripts. So, we have two names on the list. First, Jim Littlefoot.
Yeah. I'll make this as brief as I can. There's a lot of information here. Jim Littlefoot, down in New Falls. I'm only speaking for myself and not for the ENCP board. Okay, the water that's being used at this particular place or point, I'll try to break it down as quickly as I can. For one person, we got, what, 732 people there? 732 beds?
Yep.
Okay.
Here we take.
So for that one person, would be 148 gallons per day, per person. If you times that for a year, it'd be 108 million per year, per person. If you times that by 40 people, I meant 40 people, 332, you would have 39, 39 million, 5,400, 6,400. If you times that by 40 years, the length of the contract that they have, all right? And I will break down the usage, because they're very low. The breakdown from, this is coming from the USGS. One bath per person, and this is very minimum, is 50 gallons. Shower, 2.5 gallons per minute. Brushing your teeth, 1 gallon. Hands and face washing, 1 gallon. Face shaving or leg shaving, 1 gallon. Dishwasher, 20 gallons per load. Dishwashing by hand, 5 gallons per load. Clothing washing, 10 gallons per load. Toilet flush, 3 gallons. And drinking a glass of water, 8 ounces, is 1/6 of a gallon. So, all that water, since they don't have a gray system installed, is going to go into the sewer system, according to what I read on the regs. So, there's nothing in place to take the gray water and put it and store it where you could use it for the toilet and for lawns and, and trees and whatever. This is only a personal use, not mentioning watering the lawns, the trees, and the staff that's going to be incorporated for this. So that number is going to increase substantially, year by year. I don't know if the aquifer at, at that area can handle that kind of drainage. That has to be done by an hydrologist and checked by a geologist. The next thing I want to bring up, which I relieve with you, is you have a few chemicals in, in the soil. Osmic, lead, and chlorodine. So, according to the EPA, and I called them up, I'm just going to give you a brief breakdown. Since they're putting blacktop on this, one square yard of blacktop is 1,000 watts, that's what it gives off, of heat in direct sun. So on a sunny day, that blacktop is going to be 150 degrees on a square footage. Pretty hot. If you have arsenic in the soil, according to the EPA, and this is not official, it's a metallic substance, and when you add blacktop, I don't care how much water you're putting on that soil, to arsenic, which the blacktop will be about 300 degrees, it turns it from a metallic state to a gaseous state. So you've got a lot of gas going into the area when that blacktop is coming down. So, I won't get into all the other particulars, but I will leave you with what I have. As for variances that the ZBA is looking at, I maybe would sit down and talk to these people and see if you can get 40% or 50% of that water back into the system where they could use it for flushing toilets and watering the grass and whatever. And that's it.
Jim, if it's, if you have one copy of it, make sure that Kelly gets...
I've got everything right here. And I left some phone numbers in there, you can call the EPA. They're really very, who gets this?
Give it to Kelly. Kelly's right over there.
Right.
Thank you. Rick Bunt?
Right here. I'm Rick Bunt, property owner in the village, grew up in this town. I spoke out against this project from the beginning, when it first came out, here again at the public hearing, towards the end. There's quite a few things that I have a problem with, with this, with this development. Number one, I think it's going to cause a big time impact to property owners in the village, both on, both the ones that rent to college kids, and also property owners that pay taxes. Number one, you're adding 25% of the rental market by having 732 new bedrooms developed. If you're going to put a whole of 25%, 700-plus bedrooms in the village, you're going to create a cannibalized marketplace where you're going to see market rents drop dramatically. Now, I have a problem with that, because this project isn't paying its fair share of taxes. From what I see, we're looking at maybe collecting, on a 20-year pub, maybe we're getting 10 years' worth of taxes, the way that they schedule things. But, to the, to the people who are paying taxes and paying to have the infrastructure here and to have the police, I don't think it's fair that you're bringing in a Walmart-type business that's going to destroy, you know, the local people who benefit from having college, college rentals. And that's a lot of people in this, in this village. It's not just landlords, there's plenty of homeowners that rent, that rent to college students, rent a bedroom here or there. So I think this planning board ought to really consider the impact, and the long-term impact that's going to occur by having a development of this size. Now, it's my understanding that, I think it was on Friday, the college senate board met, and, and apparently the college is planning to build out 13 new dorms over the next few years, five years from now. It's been my impression that the college says it's not planning on growing, and that this project is really just because we need it for commuters and transfer schools. Well, I can tell you, I have many friends who are landlords, and I know plenty of people who have vacant rooms, and if you go on the New Falls EDU.edu housing board, you can see that there's a litany of rooms available. That means there's a lot of vacancies. You throw 732 more vacancies into this village, you're going to have a real problem. You're going to have people that aren't going to be able to pay their mortgages, they aren't going to be able to pay their taxes. And, yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe in the end, you'll get what you want, which is more families moving into the village. But the net result is, if you switch over 200 houses to families, plan on having 400 or 500 more kids in your school system, and see what happens to your taxes. So, I, I encourage this board to just think long-term and not think about a quick immediate fix. And please, do not encourage businesses. We have enough businesses in this town and village that don't pay their fair share, including the college. Don't give, you know, a Walmart-style business, you know, a free ride on our, on our tax burden, on our shoulders. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody's allowed to speak. Everybody's allowed to give their opinion, and we try to listen, but we don't cheer or do that, it's disruptive. Is anybody else wishing to speak at the public hearing? Can I get your names and write them down on the list?
I'm sorry, John Johnson, New Falls resident. Can you do me a favor and please don't lick that thing while I'm talking?
John?
It's very disturbing.
Can I get your address?
Anyways, 192 Route 299, New Falls. And I'm here to request that the planning board, I couldn't, well, I couldn't agree anymore than with, with Rick, Rick has it. I requested the planning board, please, do whatever you can to see it, see to it that they pay the taxes that they're, they're responsible for. Your last applicant came here for an accessory apartment. I highly doubt that she came here, that she would like to put an accessory apartment in her home for the fun of it. Over the last year, I, I know personally, four different people who have put rentals, have rented out a bedroom or two in order to pay their, their bills. The, our school system, as you all know, we, we, we're cutting jobs, we're cutting after-school programs, where, as a community, we're scrimping and not doing things that we really like to do. Now, a $50 million project, easy calculations show about a million and a half dollars, millionth grade worth of taxes. Personally, I don't mind you guys coming here. I, I truly don't. I agree with everything Rick has to say, as far as excess housing, but to come in here and ask this community not to have you pay taxes, and then take all the profits and suck it out of, out of here, most of the homeowners that I know that are renting rooms and apartments and houses, they spend their money in, in this community. And I, I think, I, I think it's a disgrace to even ask a community not, not to pay. I mean, would, if, I don't want to make it, make it personal, but I doubt that they would appreciate a, a big company coming in, not paying taxes, and leaving the bills on the backs of the locals. It's, 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 it's not, it's, it's not very good planning. I've, I've heard things, well, they're going to give us a sewer treatment plant. You know what? We don't have the money right now to go out and buy our own sewer treatment plant, so we're going to say, okay, we'll give up a million and a half dollars a year for a sewer treatment plant that we now have to maintain. I think we, I think we should all, I think they should pay their fair share of taxes. I'm sorry for babbling. Didn't really come here prepared to speak, because I feel so strongly about them not paying their fair share of taxes, that it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I'm sorry.
Leonard?
Good evening. You know my first name, you just said it. Leonard Loza. I live in the village of New Falls at 11 North Oakwood Terrace. I'm hoping more than anything that this project will be done right. When I first came here at the very first discussion of this meeting, I asked if the college had any, any plans on expanding or changing anything in any direction. Their answer was no. Well, we've seen quite a few things happen. Parking lots have been removed, another large parking lot has been la, been added. The biggest rumor around is that the corner of Route 32 South and the top of Platicille Avenue, that parking lot is to be removed, and a large science building is supposed to be put there. We've all heard that. Nobody's confirmed the yes or the no. I can't believe that the road structure that we have here, what you need to do is, if you think about it, and everybody knows, you don't leave your house on graduation day. We need to know that the traffic impacts throughout community, our community can handle the road structure that they're going to have. All of these items should be addressed in environmental impact statement. The consumption of the water, the disposal of the water, the traffic patterns, artifacts in the ground, contaminated soils, all of those items should be addressed, and should be addressed, and should be answered with a solution as to how they will mitigate those things. The last thing that just came to my mind as I was walking up here, wouldn't it be nice if all of the roofs of these buildings were rotated so that they faced north and south? So that at some point in time, if somebody had the extra money, put up solar solutions, whether it be for domestic outwater or for electricity, they could be done. There seems to be enough land there, so perhaps they could return in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Is there anybody?
Sorry, I should have played.
Tell me your name.
Ben Miller.
And address, Ben?
Old Case, New Row, 332. So I also didn't come incredibly prepared to speak, as a matter of fact, I wasn't sure I was going to be here at all, and I know I've missed a few of the earlier meetings, so some of what I may say is going on things that I've heard, which may or may not be accurate. But I've heard enough and I've read enough to have some serious concerns with the project, even though I'm very pro-industry, I'm very pro-building, I'm very pro-housing. I think, I've lived in New Paltz now for twenty years, and I think it's a very vibrant community, and we're continuing to move onwards and upwards, and that's always going to mean more buildings, more housing, more industry. So I have no negative thoughts about that, only that, as several people have mentioned, they should be done well. And unfortunately, and please don't take offense to this, I'm not always reassured by government's role to properly evaluate being done well in a long-term financial The three challenges I see with this project, and again, I'm going on hearsay and stuff that I've read in the paper, which I believe that's a reasonably accurate source, I heard some language that there is potentially arsenic in the ground, that potentially contaminates the groundwater. Obviously, I think everybody would consider that to be a serious concern. If it does exist, whatever paperwork is being generated about this, I think should clearly define how much of a danger that is, and if so, what's being done to remedy it. From a financial standpoint, I agree with what some of the people around me have said about government subsidizing outside industry that could potentially impact local industry. I think that's a mistake. I don't particularly have anything against Walmart. I'm just saying that they're big enough and they have enough money that if they want to come in, they don't need a tax credit. Maybe this is a similar situation, maybe it isn't. I really don't know. But we certainly can't afford to give it, it doesn't seem like, in my experience here and everything that I read and learned about our local finances, we're not doing particularly well. I wouldn't say that these are our boom years. I don't think anybody would say that, you know, these are the times when we can just let things slide and don't have to worry about the financial end of things. I think we have to worry a lot about the financial end of things. So it doesn't make sense to try to encourage industry to come in to do something that, by the way, is already being done, with promises of subsidies that we don't have to give. We don't have them. You know, we can say, "Sure, you don't have to pay taxes," but then, when the police department budget goes up, and, you know, everything else that we do to support the town, that these additional community members will need, that bill has to be paid. Taxes have continued to go up in the time that I've lived here, twenty years. I couldn't even tell you how ridiculous it's been, but it's been extreme. And I've watched many, many places across the country, you know, go through these paths of foreclosure, with everybody losing their homes, and people on fixed incomes getting forced out, and I thought, you know, New Paltz is a great community, and we have so many things here that it's very unlikely that it's going to happen here. And I've based a lot of my personal plans with that hope. But I'm not as sure as I used to be. Things have changed. I see a lot more for-sale signs in this town. If you've driven around recently, I'm sure you've seen it. I've seen foreclosures and short sales and people struggling. So I'm just saying, it doesn't seem like the money is there to just hand it out for any type of project that's not going to return it tenfold in some sort of way. If you believe that this is an investment that's really going to return our investment of tax subsidies, please show me how. I'd love to see that. The one last thing that, again, I wish I was a little better with my facts, but my understanding is that seven hundred-plus bedrooms that are being generated with this project are, that's a variance, that that's above and beyond what's actually allowed with the normal density for this property, for this size of property. If that is true, again, I would ask, where is the benefit? Why are we allowing that? I don't personally develop in this town yet, but I've seen other people do it, and it seems very difficult to add on a single bedroom, or two bedrooms, or an apartment. There's a density variance here, you know, going way beyond that. My question would be, again, where is the benefit? What are we getting from it? How is this going to help us in the long run? And I hope that you guys are all looking at that, because I plan to be here in the next twenty years, and I'd like to see us continue to do well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Bob?
Thanks. Last time I was here, I joked about being a graduate of SUNY New Paltz, that really, no joke, serious thing. You know, college has always been good for you.
Bob Gabrielli, can I give your address, Bob? Thanks for saying that.
Thank you. Bob Gabrielli, 35, Doug Road, New Paltz, New York. I went to college here, went to public school here, was a police officer here. I grew up here, born here. I'm a real local, as opposed to an express. The college has always been good for the town, and the town has always been good for the college. We sometimes forget that component. It's been a great symbiosis, this lasted for years. We provide services and a great community for the college also. Lenny Loza was chairman of the village planning board, also a graduate of SUNY New Paltz. John was on your planning board, Rick's father taught at SUNY New Paltz. So there's a lot of intertwining, networking between the two communities. I think everyone here has pretty much said it, and I said it last time I was here, I'm really concerned about the fiscal impact that this kind of requirements at one time have had, especially when, we don't know if it's a level playing field with the tax burden. So, you know, if the developer at the college can undercut the fair market rents, we're going to have a tremendous drop in fair market rents. You know, I used to be a landlord, I'm not anymore, for a good reason. Everyone says, "Oh, look at that money they get." Well, so much of that money goes to the mortgage, to the taxes, to the repairs, to maintenance, to vacancy factors and all that. One of those components is maintenance, what makes you paint your building, keep it clean and nice, so that when people come here, especially parents and prospective citizens, they say, "What a beautiful community. Everyone keeps their places up, they're gorgeous, there are really nice houses here." So if Willamette comes in and drops our fair market value, there's going to have to be a disposable component that every landlord has, and it isn't going to be the mortgage, it isn't going to be the taxes, it isn't going to be those essentials, it's probably going to be maintenance. And so now, our apartments and apartment houses will start to look rundown, they won't be able to pay for that kind of maintenance and painting and stuff, and we will lose that. But the thing that bothers me the most is the college will also lose, because it won't be a nice community anymore. And I haven't seen anybody come forward with saying, "Look, this is a study we've made of what an oversaturation of the housing stock is going to do to fair market rents." That's one thing I think we should insist on. The second thing we should look at is, why is the college, I haven't seen any rush from the college to say, "We want to be an important part of your component for this community, and this is what we're going to do. We're going to stabilize the rents, we're going to have this." You know, the college is the market maker. You know, they won't have vacancies. They'll just, instead of only accepting ten percent of the applicants, they'll accept fifteen or twenty percent, which of course has another component, is this going to be a city, based on what their rate of return is. So I really think that if the college, maybe they don't owe it to us in a strict sense, but on a community basis, if they really feel the urge, I think they would come to us and say, "Open, come on, fellas, here we are. This is what we're going to do, this is where our rents will be, we're going to stabilize these rents, this is what we're going to give back to the community." You know, Central Hudson, right now, has had a staggering, whatever, a crack wire through the public service mission, because they feel that the Fortis, who wants to buy Central Hudson, hasn't set aside enough money for public benefit. So I'd like to see a similar component in the college, where they say, "We'll give you information, and we'll give you some sort of public benefit, we want to pay back to the community," like Lenny Loza does when he's the chairman of the planning board, like John Johnson does when he sat on the planning board for so many years, like Rick Plutton and everyone else does. We pay back to this community willingly, without any kind of benefit, because we're members of it, and so is the college. And I would love to see the college come forward and answer all those questions before there's any more consideration for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else wishing to make any comments at the public hearing?
Hi, I'm Liz, Windsor Court Apartments. Can you hear me?
No.
Oh, sorry, Liz?
Can I get your last name, Liz?
Cloud.
Oh, yes.
C, yeah. And Windsor Court Apartments. I'm just going to try and be really hip here, I have a cold, but I just wanted to express my anxiety over the fact that SUNY New Paltz has not really mentioned what's gone on at these hearings or the DEIS and their press releases to the campus. I know that's not the responsibility of the town board, but it might be important to just name here that, you know, students haven't really had a lot of access to what's gone on here. Both their press releases say that nearly twenty local resident students and business owners spoke in support of the project, but as you can see, there's also a lot of people that have come and spoke, not in support of it. In their November 20th releases, they quoted a Warrant representative saying, "If this project continues, no new issues emerging at the town's public hearing." But the issues that are brought up, I think, are really important, and that we should continue to note. And both press releases also end with a statement about other schools that have had Park Point. There's twelve hundred student beds at Rochester Institute of Technology. So here are some quotes from an article from RIT's reporter magazine, titled, "Did They Get a Point?", just to give you some opinions of students that have had this project on their campus. The article outlines RIT's attempts for creating a college town in 2006 to help change the lack of community felt by students living off-campus, and that's the reason we are considering using this project here. However, RIT failed to centralize the school community and encouraged environmental degradation through the creation of a second suburb known as Park Point. The article goes on to say, "Regrettably, the construction of Park Point represents a microcosm of rust belts, depopulation, and decentralization. Instead of focusing on improving the center of campus life, time and resources were wasted maintaining a baby boomer fascination with building big-box chain stores and buildings in areas only accessible by cars. Cars are used out of necessity rather than convenience, adding pollution problems through the consumption of fossil fuels. Park Point is divided by wide roads and sidewalks that often aren't the most directly through. The area is organized for the car. When students are forced into their cars by necessity, the connection of student feels to the campus is more like a strip mall." It also says, "A painfully ironic element of Park Point's marketing plan is their emphasis on the natural aspect of living. While the beauty of the Henrietta wetlands is next door for reference," sounds similar to our situation, "the designers of the property insisted on paving the majority of the property. This resulted in nature having to be carted in by the truckload in the form of lawns, pipes, dams, shrubs, ferns, and other man-made alterations to the landscape." The article also includes student comments. One by Jay reads, "If you haven't met anyone who does not like Park Point, you don't talk to very many people. I wanted out of there as soon as I moved in. Paying that much is about the same as living on campus, but with a lot more inconveniences." He also goes on to say that Park Point does nothing to enhance a sense of community at RIT. If anything, it isolates people living there. Students that live in other living complexes seem classified into their class of people." And another student wrote that administrators should have thought more about what needs to be fixed on campus, as far as what the students want, before blowing our tuition dollars on unnecessary buildings that will cause problems. So I just think it's important to look at other student opinions, because students and faculty will be people living in these buildings. And maybe if there's a way that we can facilitate getting information out to students about the DEIS and the public hearings here, that's a little bit less biased. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Did you name?
Chris Wurada, this is Chris DeKaye, here at RIS. And I'm a student at SUNY New Paltz, and I live at 30 Platicille currently. And the last couple of meetings, something that stood out to me was that there were quite a few transfer students who came and spoke about some of the hardships they had finding housing here. As a transfer student myself, those stories couldn't be further from my experience. I've lived in three different houses now, over my time here, and they've all been wonderful, and I never had a problem finding anything. So I mentioned that to begin with, just because I think it should be on the record that that doesn't necessarily represent reality. Secondly, I'd like to say that I don't know exactly what the pricing plan for Park Point housing is. I don't know if that's really been decided yet. I can see that it might not be. I've heard that it would be in line with sort of current market in the town, and to me, that doesn't necessarily mean it would be affordable, because there's a wide array of pricing for houses in this community, and if it's comfortable to the dorms, that's going to be really expensive. And I know a lot of people have trouble affording the rents here to begin with, and, you know, if we're building seven hundred-plus new bedrooms that are on the high end of the rents, that's not going to make more affordable housing, that's going to make more luxury housing, and I don't think that's something the community needs. Finally, I just think it's sort of telling that we've heard a lot of really interesting facts from people who've come out in opposition to this about various environmental problems, health problems, and economic problems, which on the surface, one might not have even seen that there would be so many economic problems, and over the discourse that's happened here, that's really been fleshed out. And I think it's telling that I haven't heard a lot, in contrary to that, I haven't heard a lot of, you know, real rebuttals from anyone. There seems to be a lot of people here, from what I can tell, that are in support of this, and yet I'm not hearing any real rebuttals to the issues that are being brought up. And, you know, really, the most compelling arguments I heard were from those transfer students that came and said, "We need housing." And, you know, student housing is, of course, a good thing in the college community, but there's so much that seems to be wrong with this project. It's hard for me to grasp why it's being taken this seriously at this point, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Just a couple of notes on that. Purpose of the public hearing is to gather input, to gather things. There are seven volunteer members of the planning board, live in the community, and volunteer for it, are not necessarily noted experts on every subject that comes before. Purpose of the public hearing is to get your input to what you see in that, and then it's our responsibility to take that and to address those issues that are raised in public hearings and in letters to the planning board, and to address those, to find out if we do have an issue, how do we address it? Do we mitigate it? Can we mitigate it or not? So each of the facts that are brought up are needed to be addressed, and that's basically why you don't hear a dialogue or rebuttal back and forth. We're just one big sponge gathering information right now, and taking it all in, and then we have to then turn it around and respond to those things in a final environmental impact statement. So the issues raised have to be addressed, so that's why there isn't a rebuttal.
Well, I didn't really necessarily have actual dialogue as much, it's just, you know, using this speaking opportunity to put some more energy to the other side, I guess, which I haven't seen a whole lot of. That's all.
Okay. Is anybody else wish to speak now?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Roberto Olivacco.
Address?
Sure. I've come to the last two public hearings, and I've read through much of the DEIS. Community leaders have called the DEIS sloppy and inflexionally dishonest, and after reading through much of the document and listening to all the public comments so far, I can't help but agree. On page forty-nine of the DEIS, Warrant states, "No federally regulated wetlands or town watercourses or water bodies will be filled or encroached upon as a result of the project. This is inaccurate and misleading. The plans do encroach on the buffer zone of the town's..." The plans do encroach on the buffer zone of the town's wetland law." Further, on page 49, Wilmright says, "It is not expected that the reduction of groundwater supply would adversely affect others who may rely on it for consumption or irrigation." In the same paragraph, they go on to say, "Public water supply is available for users that would likely be in the area influenced by removal of groundwater." So which is it? Will those who rely on that groundwater have to switch over to the public water supply? Or will they not be affected? On page 50, "There will be no anticipated significant impacts that would be considered growth-inducing as a result of the proposed project." That statement is bizarre. On page 52, Wilmright mentions the loop bus stopping at Park Point. I was on the Town Transportation and Transportation Committee my first year at New Paltz, and I know that the loop is already overextended. When it was initially enacted, it was a 30-minute loop. It's now become an hour loop. The funding is scarce. Is Wilmright gonna help to fund the loop? That's not stated in the DEIS. They're not offering to do that. How are we going to send the loop even further? On page 52, it goes on to say, "A number of community resources are or will be located within a half-mile of the project site so that the occupants can have easy access to these services by walking, bicycling, or by a short car or car ride. Services nearby may include parks, sports and recreational facilities, schools, banks, dry cleaning restaurants, religious worship, and other services." This looks like boilerplate language that was copied and pasted into the document. The project is one mile from Main Street. Exactly one mile. You go on Google Maps, you plot the line, it's a mile from Main Street, not a half-mile. It's gonna be a car ride for those residents at Park Point. And they'll have every opportunity to drive their car into Main Street because there'll be 500 parking spots waiting for them right outside of the residence. The town ENCB submitted a public comment to your board, and in that document, they asked the question, "Why will the clubhouse have additional parking dedicated to the clubhouse when there are already 500 spots dedicated to the residencies?" That makes no sense at all, and it's just further evidence of how this project will not take cars off the road, but add cars to the road. Now, this type of generic language is included throughout the EIS. And I submit to the board, this should not have been accepted as the final draft. It really should not have been accepted as the final draft. With all due respect to the board, I know you were working really hard on getting this, getting this done. You're part-time, you know, you're volunteering your time to this project and to all the other projects for the town. But this final draft is frankly unacceptable. It's a shame. It really is. And this is only the first 50 pages of the document. This goes on and on and on and on for hundreds of pages, the same kind of inconsistent language, just over and over again. And believe me, I read through it. And it's just unacceptable. And if there's any way to go back and make them resubmit the final draft, you should do that. And that's all I want to say about that. And just one more comment, I urge you to use the leeway that you have outside of enforcing the code to promote green building standards. We're pushing for it as hard as we can as students. Our administration is telling us to come to you because we're the lead agency. The project is yours. And, you know, our hopes are in you, that you will look to the future, to the next 40 and 80 years, and please implement some green building standards that are more substantial than what's being proposed in this project right now. And you do have the leeway to do that. If you take it upon yourselves, you do have the leeway to do that. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to make any comments at the public hearing right now? Paul?
My name's Paul Brown. I'm in Robin Court. This is planning on speaking tonight. But as a former faculty member, I wanted to simply say that I'm very proud of the students that I've heard at these public hearings. This is a very nice process, and I hope every faculty member and every administrator is proud of them too. They are articulate, they formulate their arguments, they do their homework, they bring relevant facts. I think the whole community is benefiting from this process. I hope you're feeling the burden somewhat lightened by the fact that the public is involved and know that we all want the best project in this town. So I've served on a lot of committees, I've been greatly involved with the college, I can still consider myself part of the college community. So I hope any relatively new administrators, I've been here for far too long, probably myself, but still feeling like a newcomer, because I'm not a huge guy, but anyway, we all care about this community. I know everyone in the college does too. So the comments from the students make me raise one tiny technical point, which is, upon further reading, as some of your students have done, I see the phased project, and that brings me further concern outside of the financial impacts I've mentioned. The applicant is asking to build a portion of the project between 2013 and 14, and then waiting at least five years and coming back 2018, 2019, while the technologies are changing happily for us in favor of sustainable building. So I would urge the planning board to be very careful about the nature of the approvals that they give, and the zoning board reveals as well. What the applicant may say they can't do, and of course, we know that there's can't and there is not able, and there's won't, or don't want to, or ask too much, but may very well be possible in five years. And we've seen applicants come back even tonight for renewals because the economy is so bad that they can't, they can't act on what has been approved by this board. This board has to give extensions or determine whether it should give extensions. So this phased operation concerns me, and I hope the board will look into it. The entire process is a healthy one for our community. And the board itself, I know, appreciates the input, but, which brings me to the final point, which is there's clear and present evidence here for keeping the public hearing open. Certainly past the holiday season until January, when people can get back to, we're studying this, and I know what it is to try to go through this, but I admire, again, just all the work everybody in the community has done, the students too. So, and the board has expressed its appreciation for this input. I think one way you can show how seriously you take our comments is to continue this public hearing open, to allow the publicity to work, to allow the community to get involved in an orderly fashion. The applicant has had two or three years, we are told, to plan this, with the community, as I remind you, as fresh start in October, and the holiday season coming upon us, and the hurricane and so forth. So it would seem a judicious thing to do to keep the public hearing open. I know you can close it. By the way, I also know you can open it again. But the appearance is as important sometimes as the fact. And so by keeping it open, with this knowledge detriment, and you'll continue with your technical review of the project from all of the ins and outs, and the applicant will have a chance to answer all these fine questions that have been raised. I think you'll continue to encourage deliberation amongst the whole community, including the ZBA and the town board as well. And I understand our board can ask for a financial impact review by an independent consultant, and that takes time. So no reason not to keep it open, it will still process down. I am concerned that if you close the public hearing, you will encourage the applicant to think they have made significant progress, which is not necessarily true because they, you can open the public hearing again. But I want them to understand how everybody takes this seriously, wants the best possible project, and need to let them decide. So I would ask you to keep the public hearing open, and I thank you again for all of your advice.
Thank you, Paul. Jerry?
I'm in the large number of people who had no intention of speaking.
I think we have everybody on the list of people like that.
Let me say two or three things. One, I regret that some of the statements that are not factual aren't corrected in this process. And so I appreciate the attention that the board has to give to that and to just sorting through what's factual or not. Just as examples, we have no intention of building new residence, enormous numbers of new residence halls. We need to maintain the ones we have. We have no intention of expanding the size of the student body. We need to serve the student body that we have effectively, and that's why we're building buildings and maintaining them. So people may draw incorrect conclusions from facts that they observe, and there's no dialogue in these circumstances, and I haven't made detailed notes. So that, I just want to take note of the fact that there are factual errors that get into the record and sometimes into the press. For example, I didn't say that the college was in financial trouble when I presented to you. I said that the college was in a very challenging environment for higher education and needed to be, retain its competitive edge. So it's important, and I would urge you and your colleagues to attend to the factual record and understand that the process doesn't always, doesn't always present you with facts. The second thing that's concerned me for almost 40 years of studying New York, and that is the need for timely decision-making on these matters. And so I may find myself not in full agreement with my great friend and colleague, Paul Brown. A lot of times, projects get put aside because they don't get a decision, and the process ultimately exhausts the proposer. And I just don't think that's a good thing. You know, I think that just as it's incumbent on the board, and I'm not gonna lecture you, I'm inclined to do that, so forgive me, and please all forgive me, but it's incumbent on the board to come to a decision in a reasonably timely fashion, once it's satisfied itself that it has the necessary facts. And I think it needs to have the facts on the financial impact, which is a point that Professor Brown has raised, Professor Emeritus Brown has raised. And so, but at the same time, the community and the developer and the institution I work for, I as a citizen deserve a timely decision so that the matter can go forward with reasonableness and with reasonable estimation of what will cost and what the benefits or liabilities will be. And I've seen it as a public official elected and as a volunteer and as a citizen, too many times, things just damaged by a kind of water torture dripping process rather than a decisive outcome, whatever it might be. So I would urge, I would urge consideration if that is a down thing.
Thank you, Jerry. I think I'm doing this one at a time type of thing. Does anybody else wish to make a comment on it, on a public hearing?
Hi, I'm Diana Wildwood, and I'm a student. I live on campus. Basically, I don't have anything really new to say because it's all been said before, but I think that the way that this building is designed is just extremely messy. For instance, I don't understand why we need one bathroom per one student. That just seems like a waste of water and a waste of space. This is a building of the past. This is a building of luxury and social status. And why won't we try to make it a more environmentally friendly building that we can have for the future and for years to come? I think we need to consolidate it and recognize that we need to leave a small environmental impact as possible. And also, another thing, I was reading on the plan online that it's not just Wilmright that's, has this building, it's, there are other groups affiliated with it, like the SUNY New Paltz Foundation, Goshawk, and Gem of New Paltz. And I'm not really sure what their role is, what kind of role they are playing in this. And I would really like to know what they're doing, and how do we know who's going to be responsible for what goes on? Who's gonna be the one that is voicing, "Oh, well, this is what's gonna happen with the solid waste. This is what's gonna happen with the rest of it." I just think that's all left kind of unclear, and there's a potential abuse of power that can be present, that's all.
Thank you. We've just eliminated just about everybody, but I'll ask one more time.
Very brief.
Very brief, please.
Very brief. This was something I neglected to mention before, and I avoided it at the last, because you just mentioned about the extra bathroom, or bathroom per student thing that raised my concern again. And again, I'm gonna apologize if this is uninformed, this is just based on information that I have at this moment. But the information that they have at this moment is that there's only gonna be one student per bedroom, and that eventually this facility is going to be completely turned over to the college for its own use, whether that's 40 years from now or 30 years from now, but that's somewhere in the language. I'm wondering if anyone has considered the impact that the college doesn't really do singles. That's not a big thing of theirs. They tend to stack people, not quite like Corbin Wood, but they fit them in there into their apartments, and I'm wondering if that was considered, or if that's going to be a part of the financial impact study, what would happen if you suddenly go from one person for each of these bedrooms to two persons for each of these bedrooms, or possibly more because they've done that. So I don't know if you guys have considered that, and if it's worthwhile to consider, I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you. One last time. Does anybody wish to make any public comments on this project at this time? Two minutes, Bob.
Thank you. Real quick, I just, again, I spoke about dialogue and talking about closing the public hearing. Paul Brown says keep it open. The college tells us that we don't have the facts straight, and we should close it. Obviously, the public shouldn't have the facts straight too. This is our only, you, your board represent our only vehicle, the public, for getting the facts. And for that reason, I ask you to keep the public hearing open so that we can get the facts from the college and have dialogue.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm almost afraid to ask. I'll try. Does anybody wish to make a public comment on our public hearing? I would...
I'm really sorry. It's really quick. I just wanted to reiterate that there's a lot of students that it's finals time, and they have work right now, and weren't able to come to this, and also read the DEIS and wanna comment, speak on it, so that's another reason I like to keep it open. That's it.
I will point out that you don't have to be at this meeting to put in public comment. It's easy enough to send an email. In fact, it's easier now than it was 15 years ago to submit a comment. Plan, zone, board, right?
Yep.
I'm so far, so good, I keep losing it. But you can submit written comments, email the written comments into the Kelly Planning Board. We all get copies of them immediately. The applicant gets copies of it too. So you don't have to, in this world of high-tech, you don't have to be here to state your positions or to raise issues. And the thrust of a public hearing is to raise the issues, to have the board investigate those issues that are raised and try to reach, see if we can reach solutions on them. Or if we can't, we can't. But we have to address them. So I would encourage you all to continue formulate. I know a lot of you came here not prepared to speak at the meeting, but if you wanted to write things down and submit them. The board doesn't get into a dialogue with the, during a public hearing. If we did, we'd be here for years, going back and forth on it. But I'd ask you to read the draft environmental impact statement, read the documentation out there, and where you see issues that need to be raised, then raise them so we can then go back and investigate those. We've gained, we've received a lot of comment, and a lot of the issues, I will say that the pilot and payment of lieu of taxes and the fiscal impact is a major concern. Paul Brown was correct, we're looking at hiring an independent third-party consultant to give us additional insight into those aspects on it because they affect all the taxpayers in the town and the village, and all the ongoing battles with the... taxpayers in the town and the village, and all the ongoing battles with the fair share in that. So we're taking another set of eyes, not our eyes, not their eyes, but another set, separate eyes to take a look at and give us a read on that. There are a number of issues that I'm very proud that you brought up, that we will examine. Dave Klausner, Town Engineer, has been scouring through the written comments and scouring through the transcripts and pulling down the topics that we have to address going forward. So I think it was one of the TV shows, I won't date myself, but keep those cards and letters coming, and thanks for all your input. We're going to discuss with the applicant now, in our ongoing review with the application, an area of design and architect, and we'll discuss at the conclusion of that, the board's actions that we'll take at that time.
Could I add something?
Yeah.
Mike, these meetings are taped, they do appear on our public television channel, and not just once, but several times. The listings, I believe, are in the New Poles Times. They might also be on the town website. So the discussions, other than the public hearings, are available to people if they want to watch it and, you know, stay tuned.
You can watch it live, or you can watch the tape.
Stay tuned.
But people can also stay in. I mean, it's still open, you can't make a comment, but you can come to any meeting.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm just saying, you don't have to physically be here, and sometimes it's hard for people to physically be here on nights that things are going on, or to watch it on nights going on, to know that it's available to them. Okay, with that.
When is it over? I just came from bike park.
Another comment?
I can submit them written. If you really want to do it.
Do you want to talk?
I do. I ran here, literally.
You didn't bike there?
I don't drive.
Okay, Adrienne.
Okay, Arianna.
Arianna, I wrote it down, Arianna.
It's okay. I just wanted to say, because I've done, I've been able to do more research and look into more of these matters, like reading the campus sustainability plan, and I will submit all of this to you in writing, but there are things that are included in there that are just blatantly ignored or overlooked in the DEIS. And I know that we've referred to alternative E many times, which is supposed to be all about renewable energies, and if it were in line with the campus sustainability plan, that would be a section that were, was looked into a little bit further. And from what I know about SICER, and I don't know half as much as probably all of you do, but from what I know, you can add in the conclusion mitigation of adverse environmental impact, and that could be a cumulative thing that you can look at. And one of the, and specifically when it's not mentioned in the DEIS already, these are things that, or I mean specifically when it is, but not researched fully, those are the things that you can really ask for more research on. And, you know, so that's exactly what I am pleading with all of you, begging and pleading and asking all of you to step up and require these kinds of things, like, you know, the, I'm sure that somebody else has mentioned this, but the campus faculty has recently passed a resolution stating that they are requesting that this be built to at least the state standard, Governor Patterson's Executive Order 111, which requires that state buildings are built to lead certified silver standards. And so, and because it's proposed bronze, that would be one of the things. And the other half of it is that it would be consistent with the campus sustainability plan. So those are, those are really big things. And like, a perfect example is on page nine of the campus sustainability plan, one of the things that they have looked into is a biomass, dual-fired burner. You're nodding, I actually. So, and so like, that's one of, that's one of the biggest things, you know, we're processing sewage on-site, we could really focus on that. I mean, it's just like, you know, easy pickings, in my opinion. So we could definitely try to promote that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to meet with the applicant now, and the issues that we, continue our ongoing dialogue with the applicant on topics that we wish to address. Tonight, we're going to be looking at design issues. So with that, we'll give a couple of minutes for people, we'll route and change seats and.
Mike, are you going to make a determination on the publisher tonight?
We will after I finish with the applicant.
They might want to let us know that.
Find out. Now we have a discussion, and then we'll make a decision.
Well, you sort of just, Mike, the public hearing, I know you're going to talk about it after.
Yep.
Do you want to suspend it now while this is going on, or what, are you going to just say, or what do you want to do?
Well, we won't, we'll continue today. We're not continuing the public hearing today.
Okay, that's, I just, that's.
Yeah.
Don't we keep the transcript here for our discussion, or no?
No, we haven't.
Just for the public hearing? Oh, Kelly, yeah.
So, okay, the public hearing is, the public hearing is still.
We have not.
We'll discuss when we finish with the applicant, and what we want to do, what our next act is for, and then we'll go to the next.
I just want to let, you know, let you go.
Okay. I don't blame him.
The guy who was in the front row with his sports jacket, he looks so familiar, I know I've seen him.
Karen, thanks.
He's talking to John Johnson, that guy. Oh, is he a reporter? I just don't like, you know, I've seen him before, and I don't recognize him, just say hi, Bernie, or Stu.
Do you want me to leave?
You can keep it.
What is all this?
Just sure you have a right, Mike.
Stacy had seen it.
What?
Stacy had seen it. This is, where'd you go? They sent it to you?
Yeah, planning board. Took me six months to read it, so. Okay, there we go.
Thank you again for your time. I appreciate it.
Hang on, Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah, I know. Check it back. Aren't you guys lucky?
Yeah, we had discussions with Linda, and whether, you know, what issues they have, and they'll rely on us for the secret determinations when they, we're coordinating, so they're not going to start, they're not going to promote something new. Anyhow, today's, we're going to talk about rather a large area of design, and I'm not sure how you want to focus, or.
Not sure how far we'll get, but we could start, jump, yeah, we'll jump around a little bit.
Let's start by introducing Craig Jensen. He's from Central Jensen Sarge, he's the principal of the company, he's our lead engineer, or excuse me, lead architect for the project. And I believe you guys know Bruce Pocky, who's our lead engineer.
Can I just bring up something from the last meeting? I know we talked about, you guys are waiting to get findings from the hydrogeologist? I don't know if there was any update on that. Because, yeah, I showed down the last meeting, probably within the middle of the week, you have a report from them.
I don't have a good report to submit. I got a nice email from them saying that there was very little, minimal impact.
Okay.
But as soon as he gets it, yes, absolutely.
All right, all right. Sorry. All right. Start new things.
Hi, are you jumping into your topic, or?
You go first.
Go anyway, we're going to just keep going.
A housekeeping question, because I feel like we've asked for this a few times, and this concept of this memo of understanding from the college, and the gentleman from the college today was concerned about misinformation and, you know, kind of like setting the record straight. I feel like it's something that we as a board have been asking for for several weeks. So just where do you see?
Which one is that regarding?
Just all of this, any, any topic, whether it's wetlands, economic, you know, bike paths, whether they're integrated with the existing.
On all issues?
Master plans, just, you know, some sort of understanding that there's going to be a cohesive integration between this project and the college.
Okay.
So I just would love to know, like, it's, you know, from what I understand, this is something that's being worked on, what kind of timeframe are we dealing with?
And we mentioned, too, perhaps, I think we mentioned, maybe having, would it be possible to have a meeting with SUNY New Poles? It seems like all the students are saying, we're saying, everyone's saying, there's these weird connections, there's misinformation going around everywhere, would it be possible to have a meeting, bring it all together and talking about everything together? I know it's on the SUNY New Poles project.
Whether it's formal or informal, I think that, you know what, there just seems to be a lot of confusion, even on, you know, the part of the board members after reading all the information in terms of the interrelationship, and a lot of the issues that are brought up between campus plans and private development, and Goshaugh versus JAM versus this, what does that all mean? And, you know, because what we're going to be talking about this evening, I think on some of the issues, I mean, certainly to me, you know, the relationship, if this is student housing and if it's to be integrated with the campus, then there should be a pretty strong relationship, physical, financial, whatever it is, but there's got to be more than just, you know, we're the developer, and we happen to be adjacent to campus. It's not just adjacent housing, I understand.
Well, it's integrated in some, some regard.
But I think we want to know how, how we can do it more, and I think because this is New Poles as opposed to Manhattan or some suburban campus, it's a little bit different, maybe, and how it's going to be treated maybe should be, you know, looked at. I think we do have a campus and a community that's, people are here because of the natural resources and attractiveness of the Hudson Valley and things, and I think maybe people are a little bit, maybe more interested in certain environmental features than maybe some other areas. So.
And my, my thing is that George pointed out that this is what he deemed a memo of understanding, so it's not an actual legal document that, you know, anyone's to beat or being held to the fire, but I think it would just help us understand that the integrations.
Relationship, yeah, yeah, yeah.
A lot of that goes, well, you know, and some of that is, you could write that out now, but what I was looking for from the, from the college is how are we integrating this project with them, with their long, short-term, long-term, the whole area around there? Obviously, you know, they have a master plan.
Sustainability plan.
And, and, correct, and what I'm just saying is timeframe with that interconnection, that alignment on it, there, you know, people talk about out forty years and twenty years, I'd be more than happy to talk about out the next five years from the college's point of view, is how does, how does their master plan fit in with this? I know some of it, but it'd be good.
No, I don't see why there isn't a reason that they can't participate in this type of dialogue as well and to be part of it. I guess there wouldn't, you know, request for that, and we can, we can absolutely comment with that. Additionally, you know, try to clarify some of it in the response in the DEIS and writing as, you know, what the agreements are in place and where is the relationship and, you know.
I'll give you some of the, as simple as that, you have a sidewalk on 32, it goes up, the college doesn't have a sidewalk that comes down.
We have one in the house.
Okay. As simple as, as simple as things like that, that can, you know, okay, we are going to connect something, they are going to take some steps, you know, short-term, long-term, some of them are relatively easy, some are not, but how that all fits out is what we're looking for, and we've talked about it. We don't have anything documented yet, so. On that note.
Well, I just, also Bruce has offered to, you know, sit down and meet with us, and I guess, you know, I've been reluctant to sit down and meet with you until actually it was vetted by, you know, some of the comments were vetted by the full board, but they're not going to be, we're not going to sit here and have a chat amongst ourselves, we're going to chat amongst everybody. So as I said to Michael and Lagusta, like, you know, some of the things we may be raising are, colleagues may or may not be in support of, because we really are just discussing it openly now, you know, because we haven't really sat down. I guess, Michael, I thought tonight we were doing again the, an hour of our conversation, and then, and then meeting with Lomarite about, you know, what we agreed or didn't agree on, but I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I missed, so I apologize. So should we just, are you ready to jump right in?
Yeah, and I think from a board perspective, and, 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 don't be shy. If you have an issue with what I need to asking, or need the point on it, we can ask the same questions and ask of you, and we can have a dialogue going on while they're here. But I think, I'd like to get as many issues out on the table that we have, at least so that we know what we're talking about, and, you know, we'll take it from there. This has been the one that's sitting, you know, we've kicked around a few of them, we got some ideas on, some of the stuff on, some of the infrastructure, some of the wetlands issues and things of that sort, but this was the one we really wanted to talk about. I did comment that their, whether we call it LEEDs, whether we call it something else, was really weak in the DEIS, and that's what's been raising a lot of issues on it, but I would you take the, take the lead and see where we go, and then.
Lead, not L-E-E-D. Lead.
Yeah, as in LED.
Right.
As in the lighting of an LED.
Okay, okay. And, you know, and the other thing is, I just, since I wasn't here at the last meeting, when you talked about infrastructure, where can I get the notes on that? Is that from you, Kelly, that I can get the notes on infrastructure or whatever was discussed?
Between the minutes of the meeting, and if you've got any other questions.
Some of the comments, you know, I'm going to go back probably to Dave.
Dave.
So Dave, if I bump into some of the things you discussed, just give me like a wave and you and I'll just chat, you know, later on or something, because I don't really know. But, so Lagusta and I met and discussed some of this, and Lynn and I chatted a little bit. So I'm just going to start with, you know, talking about the overall design, and I guess one of the, one of the biggest issues that I see, you know, has, has to do with some of, with our zoning code and in relationship to the parking requirements, and it's not necessarily your problem, but it becomes your problem because you've designed for a lot of parking on the site, which meets code, and, but it, to me, the parking is so overblown on the property that it's, it doesn't match reality with what campus housing should be. So I, I guess I'm going to ask, you know, Dave, if you're going to be involved in the parking, if we can get a better analysis of what, you know, we're requiring, I think, a parking space and a quarter per unit plus another quarter of a parking space per bedroom. So it ends up being more than two parking spaces per unit, and that's assuming that every person comes with a car. And I think, you know, really the thing that we really want to do, if we're going to create a community as part of the SUNY campus, that we want to disincentivize the car. We want to take the car almost out of the picture to the extent that we can. And, and they've done this in a lot of other college campuses around the country, and a lot of things are, that are a little bit more progressive are coming out of the Pacific Northwest, or University of California Davis has some interesting things, but maybe you could look up, because I can't come up with a really good one, other than I think it's about one per unit, is, one, 1.2 per unit is my rough estimate. My computer crashed, so.
Are we going to face this with a clubhouse?
No, I didn't get to the, yeah, the clubhouse, you know, the clubhouse is something different.
Well, in general, what's your, yeah.
The clubhouse one also is, you know, I think it's based on square footage for commercial use, and I think it's one for 200, which again is a very high standard by most community standards even at this point. And it does seem like a duplication. I don't know, again, I know why it's there, because you had to put it there, but it seems redundant in terms of design. And I don't know where, you know, we would go with that in terms of it'd be an additional variance, but I think it's certainly a variance that should be pursued, and whether or not we.
Can I do something?
Yeah.
We, we are designing the project, we're designing the project with the environment at, in the utmost, as much as we can, but I have advised them, as I advise all my community,
don't apply for variance.
The zoning law requires this, this is what you should do.
No, understood.
We can't, I don't think, I don't think, we, we can't be made.
Can I do, say something, I mean, we, we are designed, we're designing the project, we're designing the project with the environment at, in the utmost, as much as we can. But I have advised them as I advise all my community.
Don't apply for variance.
The zoning law requires this, this is what you should do.
We promise this issue.
We can't, I don't think, I don't think, we, we can't be made to go to the C B A and ask for a variance that we don't need. I, you know, if there's land bank parking or something that can be done that we can avail ourselves of, we still have to design for the worst case in terms of stormwater and all the environmental impacts like, like we've been doing, but we just, we just can't go to the Z B A and say, please give us a variance from these parking requirements. You don't know what?
Well, maybe, you know, I think let's go through the rest of the discussion because, um, I guess, and again, uh, I haven't been on the board long enough to know and, you know, I'd be advised by both our attorney and our engineer, um, in terms of, uh, whether or not that makes any sense, number one, to go for a variance. I don't advise any of my clients ever to go, I'm, you know, a planner in New Jersey, and I don't advise anybody to go for a variance when you don't have to. But maybe there's a point to either revise the code if it makes enough sense or that you go with the recommendation, a strong recommendation from the planning board, which at some point may make sense to you, but let's kind of go through design stuff a little bit, maybe more, because, um, if the car or the parking is driving your, it's driving your infrastructure, it's driving your design, it's, it literally, it's, yeah, driving, I don't convince you that as a pun, but it's, it literally is driving your whole design is the parking lots and the paving. So I think that that's, you know, that's, uh, you're the architect, you know that, I mean, once you have to put on five hundred, six hundred parking spaces.
Uh, I, I was just holding out a little while to see if there were, I mean, if, if we talk planner to planner, if we put ten planners around the table, we're all going to come up with ten different plans. Um, and I'm, I'm just sort of waiting for any sort of other add-on issues to the parking issue.
I can give you some more, yeah.
But if I come off of what the attorney is saying, uh, the, unfortunately, the, the courts and the criteria for zoning variances aren't tuned up to green yet. And it's a, now, um, and what I mean by that is that when we turn in a variance, we have five tests that we have to, to live by. And right now those tests aren't turned into green as maybe everybody would like them to be. But having said that, um, when, when you say the site was driven by the parking, uh, the parking was probably one out of twenty or thirty items that drove the way the site was laid out.
Certainly, no, Bruce, there's nothing.
And a lot of it was environmental features, et cetera.
This is not meant to be a criticism as much as, you know what, I understand that the, the way that the environmental features are, are laying things out in an orientation that's not necessarily optimal either.
Where I was going to head with this though is that I, I just want to go back to procedures, we're right now addressing impacts. But we're not necessarily addressing whether someone likes or doesn't like the, the way it was laid out or designed. And the question here is, 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 um, in the bigger picture, does the parking create a significant impact? Or does it create an impact that is not mitigated or mitigated to your satisfaction? That's what the process we're in right now for seeker. Whether someone wants to discourage the students from driving or, or other social issues are important to the equation, but important to the seeker process is, uh, if, if we have extra asphalt on the property because of the parking requirements of the town, what have we done about that regarding stormwater or the pollutants in stormwater? Or encroaching in a wetland or encroaching in natural features in the property? Uh, and I just wanted to say that those were, those were worked on very hard. And to, to that extent, we have additional land banking that could be requested. Uh, if, if the board doesn't think that either from a social standpoint or from a site mitigation standpoint on stormwater, just to take one issue, that there is still too much parking, um, land banking is still a possibility versus the legalities of a zoning variance that, you know, is it, uh,
Yeah, but how we get there, yeah, 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 understood, understood, and how we get there, I think there's other, there's many different ways to get there and, and again, I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, the attorney and, and Mike have advised me of is, you know, that we're in the seeker process, we're not in a site planning and design process, however, I think it's important to kind of vet some of these issues a little bit because if, you know, uh, I don't think I'm going to be alone on, on some of the comments, I think they resonate with a lot of the comments that were made by the public. And if they have any traction, so to speak, then it may change your design. So, you know, I think that's probably better for you to at least analyze, think about, uh, you know, since this is the first chance we had to, to chat about it. And like I said, this wasn't really discussed by, you know, our, our full board and everything, so, well, I think parking is certainly one issue.
Can I just jump in and ask a question? In terms of the college's master plan, what are their requirements as far as this ratio of number of units to how many parking spots would be required? And then also, um, the building and its proximity to parking, like, that's what I'm curious about again with this memo of understanding.
Well, you gotta be careful, the, the college, you gotta remember the college is parking for commuters also.
I, I'd like to say a little differently, if I could. I gotta drive all the way back with him, so I gotta be careful. The college purposely hired us or whoever to implement this for that advice. That, that, they're not experts on park, they're, they're not experts on how far a student wants to walk. Uh, I, I will say that I'm, I'm somewhat intrigued by the discussion on R I T, Park Point, because that is very walkable. And it's designed to be very walkable and the students do walk. But the college doesn't know on average across the country as administrators of the college, whether the comfort level is four hundred feet or four thousand feet. So they rely on the expertise of, of the industry and that's, was some of the basis of what we've done.
But my understanding is that the, the college is currently interested in taking parking spaces away from the core of the, of the campus and moving them to the outskirts to encourage walking and discourage students from using it, so that, I mean, I could be wrong, I'm assuming that's part of the existing master plan.
Well, their, their master, their master plan.
So they have, in, in essence, kind of come out and said that, that is something that's important to them as a, as a college community.
Well, one thing you gotta keep in mind with, with it all like this, is that you've got to provide fire department access, emergency vehicle access through the site to, you know, get adjacent to all these buildings. So once you put a, a road that's, you know, wide enough for fire truck access with their outriggers and all kinds of things, you end up with a pretty wide road through this site to get access to all these buildings. And it starts to become something that you have to look at for a possible parking, you know, to use it for parking also, you know what I'm saying? Because if you didn't, you have this road going through the site, that would seem, I think, a little bit out of place. So, so we have some parking through the middle of this site and I think it's, it's by virtue of the fact that you need access to all these buildings for other purposes that it kind of makes sense to answer parking there also.
Well, that seems just kind of subjective in a sense too.
So it's not subjective in terms of the relationship you have there between access and building, so that.
Oh, yeah, I, I, absolutely.
So after you reach that, okay, is that, we're going to use that to, you know, also provide parking.
Again, I just think that, that is kind of just a leap.
Right, no, that's, that's a decision that we have to make, you know, at the right time. But having buildings sequestered without paving or, you know, in a kind of.
Oh, I don't think anyone suggests.
You know what, I'll, I'll tell you, the answer to your question is actually in the campus, um, uh, facility and landscaping plan, I think it's called. Uh, site landscaping plan actually says that the parking is to be pulled to the perimeter.
Right.
It also says that when they did an analysis, this was done by Wallace Roberts and Todd, which is a really good, um, planning firm nationally. And their analysis showed that there's more parking available than need be on campus, um, and that they were trying to move everything to the periphery. So there's not necessarily a need to, you know, the, the campus has plenty of parking, it's just, it's again always, and it happens almost in every community when they do an analysis, and you probably know this Bruce too, when you do an analysis of parking, most communities have enough parking, but it's not where people, people generally want to park right in front of something, especially if it's a commercial place, but there's generally enough parking when you look around. And the same thing holds true for the campus. But your, your, um, question about access for fire trucks and things, um, you know, that, that could also be like what's been redesigned for the, uh, the Mohawk Walk Plaza, it doesn't have to be a road per se, it could be a, a large pla- you know, walkway, right? And it could be something like that so that it's not just a road and then we put additional parking on. We could make it almost an integrated path that goes right into the campus and, and while we're, you know, talking on that, maybe, could we, do you have a, a plan or should I roll out? I had a couple of questions because.
Do you want the big one up while we're talking?
You know what, let me, I'll roll the one I heard, it's messy and yours, I don't want to mess it up. But I guess one of the questions I had, um, it's come up at a few meetings, um, about your clubhouse, I guess.
Can I say one more thing? We've, this is kind of a meta-comment, we've talked about parking at every single meeting. It's something that it seems like us on the board are very concerned with, the applicants are, the public is obviously concerned about it because so many people make all the comments about it. And even the applicant is saying, it seems like we all agree that the parking is not ideal from an ecological perspective. And I totally understand that we are completely hindered by our code, absolutely. I'm also new to the planning board process, I know that when I, for my building in New Paltz, I had to go for variances, it was annoying, it wasn't the end of the world. Our variance is so incredibly difficult that even when the planning board is advocating for them, it's this incredibly impossible thing. Just seems like we're constantly talking about the fact there are too many parking spots. And then the next meeting comes up and then we talk about it again and it's just taking a lot of time.
Look, it's, we've, we've been asked by the Z B A to keep our zoning variances to a minimum and we, the engineers did a significant amount of work to get it down to two variances.
I think, a couple of.
Very surprised that they could do that.
Couple of things to bear, bear in mind on, on, when we're talking about variance, I didn't think of that. The Z B A is very reluctant to set anything that may look like a precedent going forward.
But this would be a great precedent to set, everyone agrees with that.
No, code would, code change would be a great precedent to set.
Yeah, we can do a code change though potentially too, correct?
Theoretically, you could do that too.
Right, we could do that then.
But I don't, I can't do a code change and planning board can't do a code change.
I mean, that's a town.
Right, but I, but I, you know, I think what you want to get at it for, for parking is, you know, let's, let's throw the code up and just leave it on, on the back wall for, where's the parking, where do we think, how much parking do we think we need? And where should it be located? And let's have that discussion on it.
All right.
See what the result of that is and then see how we can get there. Do we need a variance, do we need a code change, do we, can we land bag it? Let's, you know, where, where do we want to go?
Yeah, let's keep moving, I'm, I'm with you on that because I think we can talk about variances, but I think let's discuss what we can discuss and then we can talk about all the problems and what's the best way to achieve, obviously, everybody's objectives.
My only point too with the Z B A is that we have to meet, and Bruce was touching on this, if you ask for a variance, you have to meet the criteria for a variance. Well, we meet the code.
Right, no, we understand that.
That's our problem.
We understand that, yeah, we're not naive to that, so. But I, I guess I had one design question right up front and, um, and it's the, the clubhouse and the faculty housing. And, um, I guess one thing that I keep bringing up of concern to me, if I can just put this, this if you don't want to lose this here, is, um, the interface where the college, right here, the, the campus, this. To me, this is critical to everything that's happening in the campus, it's critical to your development, to move kids into the campus and make this, this, this doesn't work unless this works to me, and I think probably as a design thing. So this has to be addressed and this can't be addressed by you, but maybe it has to be addressed by the college. And I think that goes back to the question of where is the university on this?
Sure, I think that's, goes to the answer that I think we need to organize for you guys because they are working on a plan to clean this up.
Their site plan and facility plan says they're moving, they, they're moving this out.
In addition to that, in addition.
That's, that's what I'm looking for, the short term, I know what the long term is.
Long term, they've got plans to remove all this, but short term, they are working on a plan that specifically addresses connection between here both vehicular, pedestrian and bicycle.
That's great.
And they're looking at some drives.
Yeah, and they're putting together drawings.
With you, are they working on it though?
No.
No, okay, but I think that, that's the problem.
They're, they're working on it and keeping us informed so we can work forward. I, I want to, if I may, just interject, I want to remind ourselves where, where we are, that this is, this is the seeker process. And I, I know that, that these all need to be input. Ultimately, we're going to take all of the input, once you hand it over to us, once you close the hearing and the input that you've given us through the last few meetings. All of those will go into getting you the answers through the F E I S. Ultimately, you will determine whether the F E I S is adequate, number one, uh, and number two, determine in that F E I S whether, uh, if, if some of the F E I S, for instance, suggested to you a design change based on something we've heard, we would put that in the F E I S process. Ultimately, you will file findings and your findings can include that in order to properly, to your satisfaction, mitigate a circumstance such as that, that you will require us in the findings to do something with that design. I just want to make sure that again, the, uh, this is input for us and it's very important input for us. To let you know going way back to the many cuts of design on the property, that, that is not looked upon as, for the same reasons you would like to discourage vehicle traffic.
Right.
That, that's not looked upon as to encourage any high volumes of vehicles between this project and on the campus. We see that to be more of a importance to pedestrian or bicycle connection to the college and that entrance being a safety connection to the college rather than high volume.
Or this.
Both.
Well, this, I don't, I'm not looking at this actually for vehicular access at all, I guess, that's the, what I think is important is, is how this moves as a pedestrian path, walkway into the campus.
So we are working on that with them to, to find out what their latest plans are. Uh, just as a reminder, some of the information that went into the design is now four years old.
Yeah, I know, and, and some stuff hasn't been updated and I, I get that, so.
So we're finding out what their current thoughts are to, to sort of discourage vehicular activity in that area, but at the same time encourage pedestrian and make it pedestrian friendly.
Obviously, since, since this all started too, they've now created two, you know, parking lots on the outside and moved all the parking that was internal before to the outside.
To the outside, right.
And that pushes, I think, the, the rationale even more that the pedestrian and bicycle traffic and shuttle traffic is going to be more likely used now than ever when we first originally designed this layout because now there actually is no parking anywhere near here on this side of campus. So no kids will be, be getting in their car and driving internally to connect here, they're going to be walking or riding their bike.
Yeah, and, and.
Because parking is over here now, you're going to park over here, it's right over here.
Right, I guess, you know, and I, I don't want this to sound that, you know, we're not being critical of it as much as, I mean, we're, I'm looking at this, I'm, you know, I, I, because we were asked to come up with, you know, our hard looks, I gave it a hard look this weekend and I'm, I'm throwing things out. So this is not to be, you spent a lot of time on this, so I'm just going to throw things out, you can discount them at a later date, but how about we see what?
No, that's exactly why we're, I hope I'm not saying things that.
That have annoyed me.
No, no, that's true, no, we're taking it as input, we're taking it as input in the process.
One of the, one of the purposes of this is, and it's difficult for board members to differentiate site plan review and the seeker determination. So my intent was really to throw things out on the table, if we really come down to it and say, we agree, that's really a site plan, we'll move it to site plan. But I don't want to lose it because, oh, I thought it was a site plan review and really, that really had an impact on seeker. So I'd rather it just all be done now and we'll separate as we go.
Separate it out later, correct. So I guess one of the questions I, I had was regarding the clubhouse and your location of the clubhouse here, I guess as a gateway element? Is that why it was located here as opposed to there in a transition area where the faculty housing is?
First of all, it's the shortest building on site.
Height.
And it's closest to the road, so to take into account view sheds and a lot of those types of concerns, that was one reason that it was put there.
Okay, so, um, understood, so this is, this height is probably twenty to twenty-five feet, I'm going to guess?
Max, well, it's a one-story building.
Okay, so it has a high ceiling.
It has a pitch, people lose, but that's it.
So I guess my, my, just from, uh, not taking that into, into account, but since this is kind of a, a transition use, to me, this would have been better served here. And, and the reason being, if you have a clubhouse at all, and I guess there's been comments brought up about, our code requires you'd have recreation, so you have a recreation facility and it seems to be substantive here, it, it would seem to make sense to me to move the clubhouse to here. And the reason being is here's your faculty housing, so all the students go past here, why wouldn't you take the faculty housing, switch that right there and put this here, because it's a transitional use next to transitional things, um, next to a heating plant and a police and whatever. Because it's a transitional use next to transitional things, um, next to a heating plant and a police and whatever. This way, everybody going for camp, they're going towards campus, they go to the clubhouse if they want. Um, your faculty housing probably really doesn't wanna interface with the students anyway. The ones that are gonna have cars more than likely will be the faculty. So take them out and stick them here. You can also do better solar orientation with these buildings and with all of this space. And you can also take the parking that's needed for this. And there's a lot of stuff going on here that's daytime use that it seems to me you could probably have some kind of shared parking and probably get rid of, you know, parking. So that was just number, like, one suggestion. And again, I think that makes a better transitional use between the uses here. And it kind of, everything is, should be, is kind of flowing that direction. So that's, you know, that was, yeah, my comment on, on that.
I'll take a look at that.
Yeah. The, um-
Yeah, don't get wedded to anything that's-
No, that's sad because I'm just-
Just, don't get wedded to anything here. Because the only thing that, in the, in, you know, if we're looking, everybody talks about looking at, what do you, the college property along Route thirty-two is considered prime. I think you heard Len Loza bring up that, you know, the, the parking lot on thirty-two and Platiko is gonna be a science building. Their, their master plan shows development along thirty-two. So everything here-
Is prime land.
Is going, uh, except for the steam plant and it's still that prime-
Which building is the steam plant, Michael?
Is this?
It's in there right in the corner.
Is that the steam plant or is this it in here?
I think this, I thought this was-
It's offices, I believe it's, it's offices and garages.
Yeah, okay, so then it goes back to, since this is prime land, since this is prime land, hypothetically, this, close off this entrance, this becomes the entrance at some point to this prime land. This goes this way, here's your clubhouse, here's this, here's your prime land, whatever the student, they're building. And maybe one of these gets eliminated.
Yeah, when, when it gets onto that stage of the-
Well, I think, but I think, you know, you, you need to look at that, you have to be a little bit proactive on it because if you don't lay it out ahead of time, if you don't think about it ahead of time or have it ready-
You shouldn't preclude yourself from that stage.
Right, you want it, exactly, you know that one. So anyway, so that's just a thought to me is, this is prime land, this makes sense here, then it becomes integral. Then you have potentially whatever else is happening here linked up with that. You know, ideally the parking for this would be in here, but, because it's being used right now. But you're right, that's gonna be used for something else. So, okay, so that's, that's a couple of points there.
Can I just throw out one idea too about the clubhouse? Um, I don't know if this counts as recreation code or whatever, but I was thinking that the community gardens, which a lot of students use, are actually really far from the site. I don't know, two miles, maybe, something? Um, so I wondered if there could be a kind of community garden, um, or something?
I think we include that in the DEIS.
Oh, I know.
It would be, yeah, I think we'd follow it up.
Oh, I thought I looked that up, that's funny. Um, okay, alright, which ties into my next idea of, um, I know that it was mentioned that there is, um, uh, let me see, my notes on it, about recycling. Um, let's see. The project will have an extensive recycling system from the inception of waste production on the construction site all the way through and consumer recycling programs. So I guess I just wondered for the FEIS if it could, that language could be kind of tightened up a little bit because it's pretty vague. Uh, maybe just a list of the recycling initiatives and exactly how, I think we talked about this last time, recycling on the construction site will happen. Um, that's one aspect of it. And the other is the recycling in the buildings, exactly how is, are there gonna be recycling units in rooms and, you know, how that will happen? And connected to that, if, um, since we're trying to make this as green a product as possible, we could do some sort of composting system and there could be a compost, um, you know, pile by the community gardens.
Well, yeah, there's, there's small digesters that have and things like that, but-
Yeah, yeah, like a earth machine or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, just personal, um-
So you're looking at expanding language in, in, in the document and to expand what we mean by recycling.
Yeah.
And it gets down to whether it's paper, waste, yeah, the whole-
Well, it is a lot, recycling, well, it's-
You know, tailor recycling, yeah, tailor recycling is a local, you know, is at Poughkeepsie, I think. And, you know, you can take, so I think, you know, kind of doing what, uh, what LEED does in, in terms of waste management um, on a, on the construction site and how you're gonna be separating out issues, you know, issue, separating out materials and recycling and having that very organized so that you can minimize, um, waste in, any kind of construction material would use, whatever. So I think even-
So we have, we have two issues on recycling. One is during the construction and one is explicitly during when, where the housing is occupied. And I think that's, again, things that you can point to that are, it may be practices that are existing in RIT now and Syracuse and things of that sort. Um, but lay it out, go, go, exactly what it is, down to where the separation is, where the different containers are. Because I know you got blue containers up there too.
Yep.
Um, so, and what's recyclable, but the thing, same thing about the ability to, I mean, if you can compost, compost. Uh, but if you don't have any containers for it, no one's gonna compost it.
Or no place to put it, yeah. And I know that Ariana's working on in the village too, a composting system for restaurants and things, so it's a thing that's happening around. Oh, okay. Interesting, there you go. Just a random thing, not just to go back to cars since we love talking about it. Um, I know it says in the DEIS that zipcar, um, or we talked about here, I don't know, program, um, wouldn't really work because there are cars to share at the SUNY New Paltz campus. But if you live at Park Point, you're still pretty far from the campus, so I wonder if, even though, whatever. Um, so I wonder if a car sharing system based at Park Point would make more sense because if it's February, you're walking from one end of Park Point all the way to, I have no idea where the car sharing, zipcars are at SUNY New Paltz. I'm really bad with that whole campus actually. Um, but it seems like it could be a really far walk, so why not have a couple of zipcars or any kind of program right at, you know?
Yeah, they use Hertz on demand and I think we would, we've offered that, we would include space here to extend their program. I think we stated that in the DEIS and if we didn't, then that should be clarified, clarified.
Right, just, I think, yeah, car sharing in general, I mean, if, if you, I think there's gonna be, and again, this goes back to the college, but a lot more can be done on car sharing and just the cost of owning a car. And I think, you know, the fact that people wanna live on campus and everybody's trying to save money, you know, I, you know, there's, there's lots of information on, on car sharing programs and the cost. As a matter of fact, it was just April of this year, I think it was triple A study, was to, owning a car now costs eighty-nine hundred dollars a year if, to own a car. So I just did a small calculation that if somebody used the local cabs in town, in town twice a day for the entire year, it saved nineteen hundred dollars, you know, so, you know, I think, but by kind of pushing that envelope, and again, it's not gonna be for you guys to push as much as maybe for the campus, but coordinate it and if we disincentivize the car and kinda can promote that it's really expensive to own a car and you're on campus and when you need one, there's a car sharing program. I think it said that SUNY has twenty-five cars and, and I think, yeah, we did talk about this before, that maybe there's a dedicated space either here and/or maybe even one in the village so that it's on either ends where people could, you know, start, sort of do that.
I think the combination of that and the shuttle system itself, I mean, it's all those elements of encouraged pedestrian traffic.
Right now, you know what I mean, the whole program is very, is really weak right now in terms of-
Who's program, the Hertz program, disincentivized?
No, not the Hertz program, the, the package, the car, the whole package with the shuttle, um, it's not promoted properly, I don't think, in terms of the shuttle, um, the distant, you know, some, a lot of campuses actually pay people for not bringing their car. They give their employees, um, a couple hundred dollars a year for not having, getting a parking pass. You know, that's what they've seen on some of the campuses. So it'd be nice if SUNY took an aggressive position on that and again, maybe in conjunction with you guys, you know, coming in and maybe you're the tail wagging the dog, but, but that may push it so that they'll, and it'll go, you know, be a little bit more coincident with their sustainability plan anyway, so.
Related to that, I was really curious, someone who brought up tonight, I'm looking for where I wrote down, about the loop bus. That it's already kind of at its maximum loop-ness? And is that something we should discuss? If adding, you know, adding, adding spots to, at Park Point are gonna make it totally, uh, um, fiasco?
Yeah, I think we gotta, we gotta look, we gotta meet that.
Frequency of that, then I guess you, you just put that in how that operates and how it works.
If you have only one, one bus and things like that.
I think we have, we have the plan included in the DEIS, the exact, you know, schedule as it operates right now. We've had, you know, I think there's comment from the, um, Ulster County Transit Authority or UCAT or whatever it is, um, about their willing, you know, their interest in participating here and extending the loop to this location. And also, I think it explains how the, um, the loop is funded, maintained, you know, who, who provides funding for gas and, uh, the student association or the students' fees contribute to the, the operation of the bus and what county contribution is as well. So I think it's pretty well defined in there.
So if it is underfunded and it's for some reason not able to stop there because it's already at its maximum time level or something, then is there, then what?
Well, I'm just saying, we haven't heard that yet from them, so it hasn't been an issue.
So far, they've said they've been happy to stop.
Okay, alright, alright.
Well, we could probably contact UCAT and ask them about the time, uh, the loop time of the bus.
Mm-hmm.
And what triggers a se, I'll put it, a second ride or another bus.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I think it's Bob Davella at UCAT, he's the Director of Transportation.
Um, and I wonder, has this, has anyone ever thrown out the idea of, um, parking fees, which could maybe go to, say, a bike sharing program or something?
Mm.
Just to keep throwing out ideas to minimize driving or-
Well, that should be your multimodal approach in your DEIS, yeah.
Multi-modal, that's the way to say it.
That's, you know, that should be the, the, I guess the thing that's looked at is, again, we're trying to disincentivize the car and, um, and what can be done to that. So you have the loop, you have the bike sharing, um, there's some great models around the country, you know, and that goes also to parking of bikes in, you know, besides just having bike racks, but that it's, um, people who have bikes are, they're protected and/or the university actu, actually has a bike sharing program that they offer. So again, I think, you know, in your DEIS, maybe talk about a multimodal, um, plan for that.
My understanding of, of bike use though is, I'm not a proponent of bike sharing at all, actually, I don't believe in it. My understanding is the way-
Could we let your bikes?
Yes.
No, no, it doesn't work, bike sharing doesn't work.
Doesn't work.
It does not work. The way to get people to use bikes is to provide safe indoor parking for their bikes, that's it. So if someone can lock their bike up where it's protected from inclement weather, that's how you get them to use their bikes, that's it.
And I think we have that in here.
Is it indoor, is it covered or not safe?
It's covered. And if you're on the second floor, you don't have to bring it upstairs.
You need to have that on the campus as well, you have to have on both ends.
Everything we keep talking about, we feel like the, the dog wagging the tail or whatever it is, that's, we, we're not getting, you know, the requisite information from the campus.
Tim, the bike sharing that you're talking about is like what we do in town, you can just pick a bike anywhere, drop it off anywhere? Is that what you're talking about?
Sort of bike sharing in reverse.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about one that I'm, I'm pretty sure University of Oregon does, is that you, as a student, can come and get a bike for the year. You're renting it for the year, you're gonna put your credit card down and for X amount of dollars, we're holding the bike. Now you take it for the year, it's your bike.
Okay.
No, okay.
That's what I'm talking about, something like that. Because that way now, you're, you're, it's your bike for the year. Uh, you maybe can come with one, you didn't know SUNY had such great bike paths and/or reasons to do that, so that would be, that's not, right, okay, that's not what you're talking about, so, um, right, so indoor parking for both. I mean, there's some great indoor parking stuff that we could say. Um, going back to, back to the, uh, building design, I, you have a real, right now, because of the, um, environmental constraints and the weapons and the parking and everything, you can't really orient for solar, correct?
Well, yeah, I think that's reasonably accurate, yeah, okay.
So then I go back to getting rid of some of the parking and the roads where you can start angling the building and turning them and, and that's kind of what drove my obsession on the, besides just the design obsession on the road is because you can't, your orientation is north-south as, as opposed to east-west. And your roads obviously is north-south as opposed to east-west, so it, it's, it's a difficult design. But I recognize that you're, you're kind of constricted by, you know, east-west limitations. So if there's a way that you could get rid of parking and/or tighten things up, then it gives you the opportunity to turn the buildings, even if you have to knock off one unit on the end, but you can start wiggling them around and possibly getting solar orientation, which then would obviously reduce all of your energy consumption. So maybe your analysis can, can include some of that.
Yeah, I think we might be able to look at that, I think the thing I worry about is the buildings are kind of two-sided buildings in the sense that they have, they're designed currently to be efficient, the units face both sides. You know, the, the north and the south side would be identical in some respects right now.
But it's one unit having front and back access, correct?
A unit on the front and then a different unit on the back.
A different unit on the back, right, okay.
So, so you wouldn't advantage every unit in the same way.
No, but you would advantage some of the units and also you would, you would be able to daylight things differently too. Then you may not get the energy savings on some, but you might get daylighting advantages and, and then you can work with your eaves and things a little bit, right?
Right, true, I mean, the, the, the units are not very deep, so from a daylighting standpoint, it's pretty good because we don't have deep spaces like you have in off-limits and everything. And we're really focusing, from an energy standpoint, we're really focusing on the envelope as being the s, best way to solve or to make an efficient building, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
If we do a really good envelope, then we're gonna-
Then we're gonna reduce all the energy consumption.
Right, exactly, and so the orientation on a building like this, because it's not very deep, we'll have an issue. And because the envelope is as good as it is, I don't think the orientation is gonna be a big factor in performance. And we could try and show you that and why we think that's the case.
Okay, then-
I think the orientation, if I had anything to do with the orientation to improve it, anything we could do to build more community, to me, would be a more important orientation.
Well, rather than just stretch it, tighten it all up.
Than, than worrying about the solar orientation, because I don't think in the end that's gonna be a big job.
That might, may not be, but I, maybe you can just examine that because you're supposed to examine the alternatives, it'd be great.
Right, that'd be fine.
And then I guess daylighting also, look at that because if your envelope is really tight and then you're saving from the energy and we're not gonna really get anything from a solar gain. Um, I guess the other thing is that you, I, I think the EI, the DEIS also talks about, um, solar, um, uh, panels and that they're not, you know, it's not appropriate for this because of cost. But I think as, uh, Lagusta and I talked about, your, your study was from an old study, number one, and maybe you can revisit that and look at and see what, um, um, NYSERD is offering, if they're offering anything for commercial. Because I think that you, maybe you, maybe you'd be eligible for something in terms of solar orientation.
And then I think something like that, if you were eligible, it'd make sense, that's when the orientation would start to make more, you know, what?
Right, I'm not looking at it as a passive slab type development, right, okay.
Yeah, I, no, if it was for active, you know, solar panels, then maybe the orientation would mean something.
Okay, then, then the next thing goes to, um, you know, looking at a, um, uh, energy generation and why you can't do like a neighborhood energy system, whether it's, uh, I know geothermal is initially costly, but that's initially what, if you tightened it all up.
We're doing geothermal.
Oh, you are doing ge, for the clubhouse. For the clubhouse, but, you know, trying, the, the move, you know, is to disaggregate energy a little bit from the bigger systems. And, um, if there's a way that you can kind of tie in a neighborhood system. I, I know that the steam plant is right there, is there any advantage to tying into the steam plant, which is now gonna be upgraded? It's close.
We're not allowed to.
We're not, it's a state piece of property.
Okay, well, that, that goes back to the, I guess then, the, what the relationship is because, uh, because it is being talked about in sustainability plan that, um, I think was raised by, you know, someone in the public this evening, that they're using, they're gonna be using biomass for that. So if there's a way, you know, to tie in and you're saying absolutely you can't, because even though this is gonna be a campus pro, project, it's not, so you can't tie in right now, even if you pay for the utility lines to be run?
Even if we paid for the utilities, ri, lines to run, doesn't, doesn't that matter? We talked about that for, uh, water and sewer as well, doesn't matter.
We'd love to, not, not do sewer.
We'd love to tie in for sewer, but we cannot tie into that property that's state land, it's not a, it's not an option.
Okay, well, that, that goes back to, I guess, our conversation is what is allowed and what's not allowed between the campus, the gossawak, all of that stuff. Because that seems to make sense, but, you know, it, obviously it's not able to be done, then it's not able to be done. But I think, you know, just looking at, um, a neighborhood energy system, there's lots of, uh, lots of different things. And if you are doing geothermal heat for the, um, clubhouse, whether or not, um, any waste heat then can be used towards some of your other, you know, other projects, um, so treatment plant.
Is there a reason why you have, uh, geothermal heat in the clubhouse but not in the residences? What's the, why, why can't you have thermal, um, geothermal heat in all of the residences as well?
First of all, we haven't found that there's enough land, uh, for geothermal throughout the whole site. Also, with, um, basically the smaller units, uh, the geothermal isn't as efficient with the clubhouse being a larger building, uh, with also a pool and, uh, hot water and heat. It seems to, we, we can make that work. So it is, it's a little bit of a stretch, but we're, we're trying to do as much as we can, so.
But how about a couple adjoining buildings? Uh, you have a- But how about a couple adjoining buildings? Uh, would you have a ge- a thermal, uh, geothermal access for, to adjoining buildings?
Yeah, because they, they're using it in neighborhoods. I mean, they're joining up buildings in communities and doing whole neighborhoods as a, as a combined system. So, you know, I guess to look at that again as part of your alternative evaluation, look at that and see, see how or, you know, why or how that can or can't be done. Um, the other thing is, is whether or not there's any waste heat being generated from the sewer treatment plant. You know, it's, you have a anaerobic process is, is going on there, right?
No, that, Dave.
No, it's aerobic. Okay, so there won't be any heat generated from that. Well, why don't we make it anaerobic and then let the poop supply the heat?
Aerobic.
No.
But, but there's not a, a waste heat, uh, ability to capture waste heat, Dave, uh, something from treatment plant?
Not with this one, no. I mean, there's sledge, but the sledge could be, sounds like it could be used by SUNY's boiler plant if they're doing biomass.
Not for this.
And that would save project on.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, we're just getting rid of that anyway, so we're happy to.
Yeah. You'd be happy to use that. Well, maybe that's your energy generation. Maybe, maybe it's only going in here. Maybe you do your own, uh,
It's a short a distance to get there.
Your own program there then. Um, okay, so we talked about seeing if you can capture waste heat or not. Um, what about your lighting fixtures? Are they LED?
Yes.
Uh, so your, all of your exterior lighting?
Yes.
Thirty-three feet in height is because of our code, or is that because of your, you're separating it out distance-wise, so you use less light posts? Because it seems tall to me. It seems like sh- a supermarket. I mean, can we reduce the height?
It's a safety issue, well.
Well, it's a safety issue only if you use less, you put it at a certain height so that you can reduce the number of light posts that you put out.
Yeah.
You also get larger bright areas versus, the higher you put it up, the more distributed and more even, instead of having hot spots and cold spots.
Right.
So it, it is a balance. Uh, shopping malls are really at fifty foot. Um, so th- this is significantly lower than.
But it's, it's high for a residential development. I mean, you know, from my experience, it seems high for a residential. If we get rid of some of the larger parking lots, then maybe some of those, you know, lighting, because it just seems, it seems tall to me.
I'll tell you that it's all going to be LED, so it's as efficient as possible. And, um, it, it really, that, we put it there for life safety issues.
Um, and are they gonna be night sky compliant?
Yes, completely dark state. They're, yeah, they're not.
Part of that.
They're not part of that whole.
Yeah, they're on. Maybe not, I don't know, um, with that. You know, one of, um, uh, it was interesting. I think some of the comments today were talking about, um, uh, your unit design and how each unit has a bathroom and, you know, uh, bathroom, one bedroom, one bathroom, which seems to be what's happening on, uh, around college campuses. Our attorney this weekend was busy sending articles to us.
Is your reading counselor?
My reading counselor, yes.
These units are actually most two bedrooms per bath, most.
Two bedrooms.
Okay.
Um, so, I'm not, you know, it's not.
The design also.
I wanna say, we have it all listed. I think that's close to seventy-five percent. Maybe it would be two to one bath.
Yeah, the four beds first.
The four beds are all two to one there. The two bedrooms are one to one.
Okay. But, um, I guess in, in reading some of the articles, and I actually read an article which is gonna top your article, that the, this, the, the campus.
Probably the one I did send.
The, the one you didn't send me, which was a campus that actually was, um, having tanning beds offered, and that was, that's what sold out first. And it was, of course, was LA, but, um, that campus adjacent housing sold out like that because of that. However.
Looking those.
I was actually.
However, yeah, okay, right.
They should have smoking homes too, right?
We do have that.
Well, and, and I think though, you know, those are, those are, you know, that clearly some of those are in different areas of the country.
Yes, definitely different markets, yes.
Right, and different markets and everything. And I think that, you know, that the clientele, and maybe not all the clientele, I'd love to see what students actually in, going to SUNY New Poles think is, well.
Well, we've done a lot of those interviews and focus groups and studies, both on other campuses, which dictate a lot of the design, a lot of the design of, actually, those other two properties are different than this specific layout because of the input we've had and dialogue we've had with the campus over the course of the last four years. And we have, um, solicited input from, uh, undergraduates, graduates, faculty members on specifics of design. And, um, those went into the, the reasons why we designed things like this and why we provide its, you know, the amenities at the clubhouse or even having a clubhouse. Because that is something that is not only just that we include is because it's something that is requested by students and is used by students. So, um, the private bath is a, a very important, um, feature in today's student housing. Um, and, uh, we've obviously tried to include some of it, but it obviously is not all of it because it's just a, a lot of extra space. You know, it takes up a lot of space, not necessarily the most efficient thing to do, but, um, based upon feedback and input, we've included it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that increases your water consumption. Water, water is just gonna contribute, you know, contribute to your material, um, and cost
Mm-hmm.
and I think probably your improved marketability. I guess what I'd like to suggest though is I think that, um, you know, from, uh, SUNY New Poles, at least certainly the students that have been here, and I think just in general, uh, the tanning bed crowd may not stay around in this community as, as.
I think there is one of those crowds in this community, is there?
There, yeah, there might be. But I think though that the people that are really more interested in environmental, they're really, they're the people who end up staying in this community.
Steward, right.
And I think, you know, to design a project that's attractive to them, that ends up being a neighborhood project.
He's not there anymore, so I guess it's not.
I think that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Right, that's, well, I'm just, I'm just kinda talking the talk with you, that I think that that, that's a good thing, you know. I think that that would be the more environmentally sound building materials, the more geothermal and the promotion of all of that, I think is gonna be the selling, one of the selling points along with, um, you know, possibly your, you know, your road network while it recognize it has to be serviced by police, fire and all of that.
Yeah.
I mean, I would like to see that as just a pathway right into the campus. And that it can be used by fire car, police, fire, any emergency service, and maybe the Loop bus. That's it. That's it. And everybody else parking, put it on the outside. If you need to bank it, we'll put it all to the end somewhere. And if you have your car and you have to have your car after we do a land banking or a reduced parking thing, that you walk to your car, because it's only a hundred feet away, and that you pick up your car then, that way, if you have to have a car at all. So, um, so that's, you know, that's my push on redesigning, using mostly for, you know, for walking and biking. And, and make it like, if you look at some of the, you guys probably are familiar with, um, University of California Davis, um, and what they do with their bike paths and stuff, it's awesome how they just connect right into the campus and how those little housing enclaves is, is used, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Right.
Right. You know, that make it more of a closer knit development where everybody sorta knows anything, everybody, and that it becomes very neighborhood-y as opposed to just being strung out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can I say something else?
We did energy.
But just about energy, um, I know that DEIS says that if we're using Central Hudson for your utilities. I wonder, um, I know what we do in our building, is that Central Hudson does some of our utilities, and then we also have this community energy, which is a, it's a portion of your, um, utility bill, and it goes to, you know, solar, wind, whatever things. And there's also this Veridian, I don't really know about, but there's a couple, you know.
There are a number of different electric suppliers of energy out there. Um, and it's, uh, you know, and they all have different prices and they all have different ads of what you're doing, um.
I'm advocating one of them.
That's right. We're not, we're.
Just throwing out some names.
That you'd be considering them in part of your DEIS.
I'm sure you. I'm sure from a marketing point, if, if they went with Central Hudson for the electric supply
and two years later somebody made a sweetheart deal or offer, um.
And you can do a mix.
Well, you can mix it up. You can buy it from this and that. It's, uh, but it's all, it's, it's the same kilowatt hours come, it doesn't, electricity doesn't go by markets, pr- prices do. Um, but I wouldn't, I, I don't think it's a real big issue. Um, um.
Where electricity comes from?
No, from a, from a marketing standpoint, or from a business standpoint, who your supplier is. Um, because they.
I would just agree respectfully.
Uh, well, I'm not, there may be reasons why you pick, you, there may be reasons why you pick one over another.
Sorry. You, you are interested in solar panels. Well, what I'm saying is that, for instance, one, I won't mention it because I want to seem like a commercial, but the one that we use, we don't have solar panels on our building because we can't afford it, because they're insanely expensive. So we, some of our, um, utility money goes to a, uh, group.
Yep.
Then, you know, invest in solar, I don't know exactly how it works, but.
You can, you can invest in wind, you can invest in, even the town, I think the town, right? Isn't it town?
The town has some of that too.
Why not?
Yeah. You can take a look at that also, you know, whether it's out there or what is there or how much is there.
Well, you only started writing it down when, when, uh, when Mike said you can take a look at it.
You have to try, everything you have to say, this is like Jeopardy. You have to say in the form of a question.
Okay.
And have to, you have to examine it in the DEIS. And then it goes on the list, right?
I just wanna say, I had mine written down before you talked.
Mine's written.
Good job.
Here was my list.
That's the third page.
And I, and, and for the life of me, I'm not sure if it's meaningful in, in a certification that you buy from somebody like that. I don't know. Don't know well enough to say that. Um, but clearly you can't have an oversubscription of windmill, wind, wind energy in the state if there isn't enough wind energy to supply. So there may be limitations on.
We can discuss this another time. This seems like a good discussion we could have.
How much is there? Yeah.
You're welcome.
Your, um, your landscaping.
After forty-plus years in the business, I may know some of it.
In, in terms of your landscaping plan, I think you probably should be guided by the campus, again, the site plan and, uh, campus landscaping plan. They give a, a big list of native material and, and things like that, and I know you've used some of that, but I think the list in there is pretty comprehensive. So I think that's probably a good, um, thing to examine in your DEIS and include that all your, your.
We'll have, um, we, we, Lynn, my, uh, tree expert.
Native and ir- non-irrigated and/or, yeah, and anything that needed to be would be a gray water.
Yeah.
It did, at, at some point, I think we talked about, um, you know, I'm not getting into the physical design of your building, we don't necessarily need to do that, but if, if, um, solar could be put on your roofs, I think that's something that we'd be interested in. And if it can't, then, you know, why you can't in terms of maybe its orientation. The fact that, you know, if you had a low pitch roof, you could maybe do a green roof and/or a low, um, albedo, uh, in white roof. Um, so, uh, and, yeah. So all of those things should be included in your examination of other things in the DEIS.
Just to get back, just to get back to, uh, Eileen on, on landscaping, um, Alwagner and Lynn are gonna look at that and use the college stuff to.
I'm just throwing out the general. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. And.
Can I, can I get back though to?
Sure.
It just seems awful that everything seems to go back to parking. And, you know, I think we should really, um, since this plan really shows the problems that our parking code brings up. A lot of the parking here is actually in the buffer zones of wetlands. Um, you know, if, I see these little dotted lines. They look like buffer zones to me. The stormwater things are in them. Some of the parking is in them. Um, you know, if they were highlighted with color, wi- without the requirement for so much parking, you would be able to stay even clearer of, of some of these buffer lines, and you would have more freedom in how you arrange the things. And so, and less permeable surface and possibly less requirements for the stormwater management. And so, you know, it really is a, a textbook case of sort of unforeseen, um, effects of a particular law and the fact that it hasn't been updated in a long, long time. And, um, I think it might be a good thing if we could figure out how to approach the town board to look at their code and actually move forward on making some changes to it because of just the clear example this, this project is. You know, it's obvious that you have worked so hard to answer so many of the constraints, the concerns, the community, this and that. Um, and, you know, you've done a remarkable job with what you have to work with and, um, but you shouldn't have to work with some of this stuff.
We do, we do have to look at it too.
Thank you for those comments. I appreciate it.
That we've, uh, that we've been charged with this board and before, even before this board, when we first started planning to save the wooded area and not do anything on that area, which took a significant amount of land.
Right. Mm-hmm. But this goes back to that also, you, by tightening it all up, you could then preserve additional woodlands,
which is the comment from the ENCB and the comment from everybody else is that, you know, as Lynn just said, you know, with all that you've done, you're right on the edges of everything still, and you haven't exceeded your permitted impervious coverage. You're below the permitted impervious coverage. So, Lynn, you know, it's common for communities to design codes and generic setbacks and things, and one size doesn't fit all. And, and particularly for, um, campus housing, and particularly if it's gonna be attached and, and in the future, I'm gonna guess that, you know, this big site that's right here, that goes wraps around here, that happens to be owned by the same people that own this, right? I mean, this is, if they ever gonna do any more adjacent campus houses, this is a really big piece right here, you know? So I think making everything focused that way and, and making it more like a community that's part of the campus, uh, even though it's freestanding and may only offer a few more amenities, you know, if it did for some reason go to something other than campus housing, which would, you know, be an issue, but, but still, it would be designed as a neighborhood then. It would be at least a neighborhood. And, and, uh, and I think that's really what we, you know, the, the point.
Well, I, I, I think it'd be a great idea to be able to reduce the parking space. I mean, it's, it's just over, overdone. But my, my concern would be, would that be spot zoning if they pass a law just for that?
Not if there is a planning reason to support it. Spot zoning is when you just change it to somebody wants you.
And they're not asking either. So it's, it would be, we could do it for, for campus housing, right, George?
Yeah, but we'd now be wildly enthusiastic about going to the town board and asking for this change. That's a discretionary act on their part.
What Mike is saying is true. Keep in mind that this is the RV zoning district. It is intended to be general housing.
Right.
It is not campus housing. It's not student housing. It's being adapted for that purpose.
Right. Right.
And there's obviously some modifications that should be made or could be made to aspects of the zoning requirements. You know, it's certainly an argument for flexibility.
Right.
Uh, whether it needs to be something where you eliminate spaces for student housing, that if this was a standard residential project, probably would be required. That's an open issue.
But parking right now at one and a quarter per unit is not standard housing parking. That, that's designed for the campus, is it not?
No.
No, that's, that's what our code just requires, okay.
It's RV.
For this kind of, called denser housing, yes.
For an RV.
Right.
Multi-family.
It's per RV.
Yeah.
I think the general requirement, the general requirement for parking, if I'm not mistaken, for a single-family residence is two.
But do we have it in the RV code is the parking? I didn't look at, I couldn't find my book before I came. The parking ratio for RV is within the RV code or is it in a parking standard?
It's, it's a, there's a specific requirement in the RV.
In the RV, okay. I mean, because if it was a parking requirement that wasn't specific to the RV, that it was a per-unit type thing, where we had campus housing as a standalone, when you're doing campus housing, here's the, here's the number you look at, Dave, as opposed to, because these aren't single-family units and they're not townhouses per.
We'd have to modify the RV though, because we're in.
We'd have to, right, understood. I understand now.
And that's where I come from is that i- if we rea- if everybody agrees that we have too much parking.
Well, I tried to do this so we could chat amongst ourselves.
That's right. I've got self for.
So we chat amongst ourselves and not bring these.
No, 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 no. It's good to have a discussion. Actually, we're, we're, we're actually glad to be here. I just. Is that, to finish stating up is that there's nothing that precludes us from a planning board to landbank twenty percent of the parking spaces.
Try fifty.
Fifty percent of the parking spaces. Uh, what, we, again, have to fall back on some rationale why we picked what we picked.
Right, no, just, I think that we can get some, you know, realistic parking ratios, right?
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm, you know, probably, because you've told me already that it's not, you don't have that parking requirements up of say RIT or somewhere.
It differs between the two, but it's not.
But again, I mean, we can do some research on what, what kind of parking it is and then land bank it, which we, I bet.
I have a question for Bruce because when we were asking before about, I was trying to understand, is there a ratio that's required by the college's master plan? Your response was, well, the college hired us because we know how much parking should be used for, for this type of housing. And, you know, Mike has brought up several times that the reason that we have the number of spots that we do is because we're responding to code. So if code was not an issue, how many spots do you think this, this project needs?
Well, I mean, not, number one, code drove us here.
So. We're back on the ride again.
It comes back to the driving and all.
But to try and, you know, properly answer that, our, our approach, our approach would be, in, in the best of worlds, we are trying to disincentivize, we're trying to do all of these things that sound good in this day and age. Not a lot of us at this table know how successful that's ultimately gonna be at the end of the day. Our approach right now, whether it's a green approach or a practical approach, we would like to put in the minimum amount of parking necessary for a lot of reasons. But at the same time, we do not want to paint ourselves in the corner if twenty years or twenty-five years, we find out that the nature of the automobile and.
Hydrogen.
Hybrid or hydrogen technology is such that, in fact, it's the way to go.
But that doesn't preclude you on a site plan.
It doesn't, all's I'm saying is that we would like to, I mean, if we're afforded the ability to look at the minimum amount of spaces, we'll be going back and looking at the drawing board. We were, we started out with about twelve different interpretations that we needed from the building department and ultimately working with the zoning board of appeals. We didn't know, going back to the RV zoning, how many of those would be required to be variances and how many would be straightforward. We, at a lot of requests, brought that down to two variances and including, what we've already said a number of times, that the, the parking variance, especially in the face of code that says you need this, is actually hard for us to get. So I'm a big advocate of land banking and designing such that we design properly, but afford the ability down the road if something doesn't work like we all hope and think it will.
Maybe that goes back to what Mike is suggesting, is land bank as much as possible.
I also just want to mention along the lines of the parking and what can be shifted and things, it's not just those wetland dimensions and things of that nature regarding solar orientation in the roads. There's the slope that comes down.
Right.
In that direction that has to orient us, otherwise all of these buildings oriented the other way have to be stepped throughout the slope and the topography. So it, it's not a linear discussion about just removing the parking and then reorienting to solar. They all work together. So sorry if I didn't give you the right answer before, but I think versus changing code, versus socializing what we want people to do and not being real sure that they're gonna, the best thing to do is leave some flexibility in the plan, but work with you on land banking to reduce impacts. Again, we're still here at the seeker process, trying to get through the impacts.
Oh, I understand.
You keep reminding us.
It's my job, it's my job.
Tim, I just say too, that the RV parking that's required is much more than is shown on these plans. There's fifty-some spaces that's already land banked on. Oh, I'm fully, I'm fully aware.
Right, we're, we're land banked to some extent.
Let me just say, a variance means you do not have the potential reserve to place the parking on the site if it is required. A land banking is structured so that you show the spaces and you provide the, you demonstrate the opportunity is available.
Right, and then you have a variance, right.
And then you choose whether or not to pave it.
Right.
And that can make a big difference when you have a new use and you're not sure how it's gonna work out.
And we can allow that flexibility, what I like about it is can allow that flexibility if it's needed and they can prove that it's needed, then you come back and, but until then, you say this area is, but the area stays pervious. You don't even put in pavers or anything else like that.
I think the other thing is though, if you recognize, if, if everybody, if you say that the code is broken on that and then to bank that much, is you still have the fallback to go back to a sort of like a more suburban model, I guess. And the thing is, I think that we've kind of all recognized that doesn't work anymore, you know, so.
Right, but I don't have any flex, what I'm saying from a planning board perspective, that's the limit of what the authority has. We can go to the town board and say, you know, this parking is, is, we've done it for this calculation here and it just doesn't work and it should be reduced, to take into account a zoning change on it.
I mean, there's, yeah, there seems to be a lot of different, you know, if, in a, in a perfect world, hypothetically, just say we got rid of fifty percent parking and whether we land banked it or whether or not you made, you banked the money for that parking and put it in a fund somewhere that could be used for parking on the campus here someplace, but it just goes into an account or it goes into a fund, it's still the money required, was it fifteen hundred to three thousand per parking space roughly, I think? About fifteen hundred to, so you put that in a fund and then, you know, I mean, to me, there's lots of different ways. Whether they're legal or not is something else. And I know that's not something that, you know, the attorneys ever want to, you know, because you, you want to get through the process. You don't want to be all creative on this, but there's lots of different things we could do. But going back to one of your variances, I think for building height, does the board have any problem going higher if the buildings got turned to reduce the footprints? I'm just curious.
There's an impact on view sheds.
Maybe, maybe, I mean, I guess that's the, that's the question. I'm sorry, George, you're going for variance anyway.
Do you presumably want to study that if you change it to understand the impact?
And we looked, and one of the alternatives, did look at taller buildings because we had this issue because for those that have been around on this project since the beginning, they started off at six-story.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that, well, that they were consistently six-story, correct?
No.
Okay, so I think, but. Okay.
Because of the objection to the tall stories.
No, no, I meant in the project, it was, they were, no, they were, they modulated throughout the project?
They, they started out at six, they, and they went down from there. I mean, we, like I say, we've had, in the DEIS process, we had to go through the alternatives.
Right.
Process, which we did. And this, I think, was the preferred alternative by six out of the seven members.
I think what, yeah, what happened, what happened on the, on the taller buildings was, and again, it may be dictated by the parking, but the footprint didn't change as, as, as large as you thought it would.
It doesn't change as much because you end up with additional staircases because this is.
You lose.
Well, and, and once you go over three stories, you need two stairs for egress instead of just one. Plus you need elevators and you need closed hallways and you need different construction types. So the buildings don't become as efficient as they are now. So that's one, the view shed is, issue is one and the efficiency is another issue, which leads to larger buildings and not as much savings as you might expect.
And then, but where, where, where are the tipping points as far as efficiency and being able to use gray water and geothermal? And, you know, like if Bruce points out, you know, we have several, you know, moving, moving.
Yeah, I don't think it would, the gray water wouldn't be driven by, you know.
I don't think the gray water is driven by.
That wouldn't be.
Well, we were talking about it last, last week and it seemed like the reason that gray water couldn't be considered is just because of the double plumbing, so if you had to use less plumbing, that would be.
You'd still have to do a double plumbing on the egress.
Yeah, you still had to.
You know, there's a really simple.
You might cut down on some of the double plumbing on it. Was it, well, I, I, I did make a comment that if there was one building, there'd be less double plumbing on the site, but you still have double plumbing throughout all the building.
There's a really simple.
But then geothermal, I mean, it, it seems like, yeah, you know, the point you were making earlier about the clubhouse is that it's a larger, larger building, so it's an efficiency thing.
Yeah, that, that's, I think, more about the size of a, a unit on a single thermostat versus the size of the building itself. So what we're saying is, you know, you're trying to run each one of these small one thousand square foot apartments off this geothermal wall, so it's harder to tie all of it together, you know, whereas the clubhouses are larger, evolving under this, you know, one air handling unit, one.
So basically for geothermal.
I'm not saying it's not doable, I'm just saying it's difficult.
From a geo- geothermal point of view, you'd have a unit, like an air dish, you'd have one unit for.
We could do geothermal for a house.
Well, we do, and you have to piggyback those together onto one wall, so it's just more complicated than.
Yeah, you, you'd have.
But it'd be a neighborhood well is what we're talking about.
Yeah, but you'd have thirty, two hundred and thirty-two units.
You can do horizontal though, you don't have to go, you don't have to go.
Oh, that's right, yeah, I mean, I don't know what this site supports, but, yeah.
Because you have, I mean, you have a lot of disturbed area, I mean, you're gonna be disturbing a lot, so it just seems like you could, even if it was just a supplemental or it kind of brought the base heat up to a certain thing, I mean, it seems like it might be doable.
Or to help with air conditioning even.
Throw parking under the building.
Yeah, that was my next one.
Financially, it would be viable for the project.
Once you, once you do that, you've got to provide a type-one construction, like a fireproof construction between the parking and the residential structure.
Get the cores out.
So you end up, that separation ends up being very expensive.
It also is not consistent with the desire to disturb less, the, the layout on this property using the slopes and everything, we feel disturbs the minimum amount of soil. You've heard a number of things about soil and materials in the soil. And our desire is to move as little of that soil as we possibly can. So when we start talking about structured parking and things of that nature, that.
What about leasing some parking from the university or?
Or shared parking.
Yeah, some shared parking.
Well, shared parking works great if the other party wants to share it until they get.
No, not shared, leave, rent it from them.
Well, if they could rent it, they could probably rent steam from them too. Again, you got, again, I'm not saying not to, but these are the dialogues with the college, are they valid?
Well, we need to know, they'd be great if we could check, yeah.
These, you know, to me, it was interconnections, but we're, we're looking at shared energy. And, and just, you know, in fact, if they can't or they can't do that or don't do that, I'm not sure the benefits, I'll, I'll just, I'll have, where the parking lots are located on campus? I don't see, I.
Oh, I thought it was your saying right now, I didn't mean put the parking underground, I meant if we were raising.
We'd still be moving, okay.
Yeah, but they're making the, the parking lot, which is east of thirty-two, much larger already.
Yes, because they're.
So lease some of those spots.
Well, again, you know, we may.
It'd be cheaper than building your own if it already exists.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they don't need the parking there and they said, well, your code says I need X amount of parking spaces and I got two hundred that I got from the college that I'm, I'm shared parking with, I'm not gonna have it on the site.
Well, that goes back to my, my, you know, let's be creative, you, you take the money, you bank it, you do like a transfer parking rights. You take the parking and you stick it someplace else and you put it over there to build a bigger parking area and move it, but then it goes back to, still, we need a variance probably for.
Well, you would need a variance in that case because the parking has to be on site.
On site, no, exactly, that's what I'm saying, if we're talking creative though, there's ways to do lots of different things.
There are, there are lots of opportunities. One of the difficulties the applicant's gonna have is figuring out what is within their control versus something that the town or the village or some SUNY could do to create an opportunity for some activity to take place.
Some cooperative activity.
Well, they, they can't make SUNY do things, they can't make the town or the village do things. You can identify options, it can become a mitigation that could be effectuated by agreement of, these various other issues.
Right.
But it doesn't mean it's gonna be something accomplished by them as part of this project. It, it lays out the groundwork for someone to do it. So there is, there is like just a, you know.
There's, it's compi, and, and we, I recognize that it's, you know, it's complicated, but it seems like it, there's, there's certainly merit to it for all parties and to, you know, to come to the table and kind of bring good design ideas and work together on it.
But, yes, there, there certainly is, what I would suggest is, to the extent as possible, if you can lay out a specific option, identify an instance where it's been done before in New York State and say it should be emulated if possible here, that's going to move the process ahead a lot further than, you know, saying in California they did something. Because California has a different regulatory and statutory framework. So, you know, pointing out something can be done is different than pointing out it can be done here.
But the, the stuff that I'm pointing out in California, like UC Berkeley, is, that's just, that's just land design. That's land design, it's, it's about creating a road system that makes sense.
If you have, if you have an example which is just land design and show, it could be done here, pointing to that specific thing and saying, this is an example, is going to make it easier for the applicant.
But that's what we're doing here, I thought.
Well, you are, but you're.
Do I need to bring the pictures? I mean, I have the zip car stuff. Right, right, he, he knows where I'm going with this.
Give them whatever you got, and the more you give them, the more they can do with what they're given.
I think the key, and again, picking up on what George is, and the areas that you can affect or not affect as it's built or anything, the key is coming, coming back to your discussion and dialogue with the college. What they're bringing to the table, what they're allowing you to do, where their long-term plan is on this whole area. It's off record, I mean, it's nothing one couldn't have, but again, something concrete from them from a short-term perspective of what they're doing to effectuate interconnection of this project. And that's what's missing, has been missing, still missing, okay?
With the landscaping and some of the other aspects of the master plan, the extent to which you're in synergy, you demonstrate synergy, it's going to look like something which is more integrated than just sort of like.
They did this and you did this.
Right, yeah, all those reports are online too, the sustainable, you know, master plans this year. The facility plan is two thousand and ten, the site design plan is two thousand and eight, I think, so I think those are all available, so.
They're, they're all available, but they really should be sitting down with you guys to talk through these things. So that the landscaping will look like it's been all bought at one store or one place rather than, oh, look, palm trees over here.
Do you think the college landscaping looks that great?
Be careful, you might get what you ask.
Right.
That's the question.
I mean, crossroads was trying to match the sharp right plaza.
Which is the beauty of this project, you have an opportunity to ask the campus to design something on their property which is consistent with this.
Uh-huh.
And what you decided, not just, they'll do whatever. Well, make some suggestions, there's been a fair amount of solar proposals for solar panels in parking areas. Is that something you would be interested in seeing the applicant look at? Because it does allow.
Allows some roof structure with having solar panels.
It, it has some convenience, it seems to be becoming more popular.
You could, I'm still not happy with the parking, just parking in general, but you're right, if we're gonna have it.
If you're gonna have it.
Yeah, yeah, certainly, that's an easy, that's an easy one to, to cover.
Yeah, in addition, it's like you're killing several birds with one stone by dealing with this parking issue. Because, you know, we began to discuss the congestion and traffic issues and I personally didn't think that the, that the responses were satisfactory in terms of, you know, the original parking or traffic studies for Don on Wednesday and Thursday, and this is gonna add no net new cars. And I, I just, I'm not comfortable with that explanation because I don't think we have a traffic issue on Wednesdays and Thursdays. We have it on Saturdays and weekends. And of course, students are not gonna be using their cars Monday through Friday, they're gonna be using their cars on weekends.
Friday, yeah, late Fridays, yeah.
Yes, and that's, so by discouraging car use and, you know, that's, that's all part of the, the bigger picture.
Right, and connection into town with SUNY, you know, making that link is, is critical in terms of getting on Route thirty-two down, you know, that, that seems critical. Just going back to the height again, limitation in the view sheds, you know, because your, because your orientation, I think it drops, I had down that it drops seventeen feet over here from this entrance to, to here and twenty-two feet from here to here in terms of, there's a slow, a low pitch going this direction. But, you know, in terms of raising up the buildings, I mean, you're in for a building height thing and I understand the other complications, but also your long axis is, is along, so you're blocking the biggest amount of area because your long axis is turned east-west. So if the building shifts, even if that, you know, it's another way to argue, you're building variance argument is that you've twisted it now so that you've opened up the view sheds as opposed to. So again, that goes back to, you know, the orientation issue. issue.
Right.
But I think Spider was talking about how, you know, they really are delicately working with where the wetlands are. I don't know that they have that much flexibility.
Well, they do, when you get, this is right through here, let's say, one side of the street is forty-six feet wide, forty-nine foot wide when you have the angled parking and this. This area from here to here is forty-nine feet is what you have on your, I guess, one of your little.
Right.
You have a twenty-foot aisle width, you have a twenty-foot, this is what it said, twenty, twenty, and then twenty. Somehow, it came up forty-nine feet from here to, to here.
Right.
Yeah. So, on each one, and so if you have forty-nine on here and forty-nine here, that's huge.
Yep.
So, when you, the minute you start squeezing that all down, and then this one, road width with the two-sided parking, this, right here, is forty-four feet wide. I mean, you know, talk about access for police and fire, you know, we don't need anything anywhere near that for that, for all of the, to accomplish your parking, and I think you did a good, a good job of putting it there, but, and I, and I think that's an efficient way to do it, but if we could tighten that up, I mean, just think of that space that's lost for.
If there's any way to tighten that up per code for fire, we'd be happy to, and we'll take a look.
The fire department took a extensive look at this as well.
Oh, I'm sure they did because of the way you designed it, right, and they can get through right now.
It's not, it's not just that, it's, when I went back to telling you that we tried to get about twelve to fourteen interpretations from the building department, a, a lot of that relates to driving lanes, driving lane widths.
Right.
Your code, virtually everything, I, I, I should explain about.
I understand you're all driven by code.
No, 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 we're not just driven by code, we're, we're driven by four years of planning, including the county planner, and Spider, and the environment that we can't see on that map with the black lines relative to the wetlands and the buffers, the slopes and the topography. Uh, the boulevard concept was, uh, was largely driven at the county level in their suggestions into our design.
Right.
Uh, this looked much different four years ago, along those lines, um, and, uh, their, their comments were just as equally, um, intense in their view of planning and, and what this should be is ours are this evening. Um, but then, when we layer upon code, and it's just not parking, it's lane widths relative to the fire, it's, uh, it's the potential for dedicate roads, and all, all the things we've been discussing for many, many years, um, and including those twelve or fourteen interpretations we went through, that, that's what drove that layout.
Well, you're silly criticizing this, and I'm not criticizing it as much as.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to say things to not make it sound like I'm concerned about the criticism, cause we're both planners.
Yeah. Cause I'm not criticizing it, I'm just kinda pointing out the, that, that I think you, you laid it out well, you did do a boulevard, and you, you had to get all those parking spaces somewhere, and you found a space for them and created a boulevard. However, it still is, it's huge, and wouldn't it be nice to get back some of that, is what I'm pointing out to my board members, where you know how wide this is.
We know how wide.
I don't know where everybody else does.
And we know the green infrastructure that's there, and the, the low-impact development that we've designed into that, where, and again, we're at the seeker stage worrying about whether what's being created has significant impacts and whether they've been mitigated. Um, so, in addition to the design, you've already heard for the previous couple of weeks when I wasn't here, some of those features, so, uh, that's probably all I would interject in that, uh, most everything you see has probably five reasons for it being there, and I'm only saying what I'm saying because there's some new members on the board that we haven't been here with for, for four years. Um, but, uh.
Well, I haven't been here four years, you haven't been here four years.
As far as the parking lot goes, for an emergency vehicle, for a ladder truck to set up, you're probably, well, the outriders would probably be thirty feet wide.
That's about right.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
But a lot of times, the way they've designed a parking lot like that, you're saying that's forty-nine feet across per side?
Well, you got cars.
Including the cars, okay.
Including the cars, because we needed, we needed clear lanes, not, not including the parking spaces.
Right, you need something to be able to get around it also.
Right, and that was part of those interpretations.
He doesn't necessarily need to set up continuously along there, we need intervals to set up, so you don't have to have thirty feet clear, but you gotta twenty feet clear, and then you have to have twenty-six or thirty.
Well, you need thirty feet to operate, to set it up, so.
Right, but he doesn't need to do that every, every linear foot of pavement or anything. You gotta provide a.
Right, but just in front of each structure?
Yeah, that's, at some point, front of each structure.
I'll, I'll tell you, an interesting story was, um, I worked in Princeton for a while, and some of the developments came in, and they were being designed at thirty and thirty-five feet because of the fire department, and the, the planning board there said, well, weed, weed's too big, and the fire said it's not big enough, so it was going back and forth, and literally, the planning board drove around with the fire department in the truck to see how much, how little and how much they needed, basically.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Wait, wait, because, and they both compromised, they both ended up compromising, because they realized that the fire department, they found that some of them were volunteers, and they needed more training in terms of how they drove the truck, and the planning board realized that some of the limitations when you're running to a fire, that you don't want anything in your way, and that its safety is clear, and big and clear is better.
Right, you have to look at the possibilities of where those cars are parked, because you can inevitably, you'll always get somebody hanging out.
Somebody's gonna open the door, yeah.
It's not, it's not, the steam plant at the college is a perfect example. They're supposed to, and I think that's twenty-eight feet, you can hardly get a truck down through there.
Then, and that makes no sense to me.
Right, so, I mean, but what, what the.
It doesn't make.
Well, that's a safe.
You know what? I mean, again, I work in the city of Hoboken, you can't believe how those trucks get down those streets, and if you know anything about Hoboken, there's no way you can get down those streets with a car.
I grew up in Hoboken.
Okay, so then, there you go, and.
Haven't been there in about sixty years.
Yeah, okay, well, but if you see a fire truck get down those streets, it's amazing, they get down those streets. And there's double parked cars, and there's cars parked everywhere, and that fire truck.
Well, no, what I was getting at is that, I didn't think you'd had to go as wide, because a lot of times, they'll leave an extra ten or twelve feet around, so you can go around the apparatus. With this, you can go down the other lane.
Yeah, you would be able to get around it.
Right.
Yeah.
There's a whole lot of stormwater treatment that goes on in that boulevard, too, I gotta tell you. I mean, there's a lot of things.
Right, that's what I'm trying to, thank you.
Yeah, but Dave, I guess the thing is, when you reduce, if you can reduce, and when you reduce it, then the reduction in the stormwater is also reduced.
Depends on whether you're gonna landbank it or not, because if you're gonna landbank it, you have to consider that it's pavement. You have to design as if it is pavement.
Oh, cause you're still laying the infrastructure out.
Yeah, we have to design for the worst-case scenario.
Oh, you gotta come back for it, I mean.
But Dave, right, and so, all of your bio-sweals and everything are all kind of in the centers of, of these areas right in here, correct?
Yep, yep.
Right, so even if you reduce the width of this, you still can keep the centers and just kind of shrink it down potentially, right, so that you still could have, basically have it all.
The problem is, though, getting the parking off of there, where are you gonna landbank it? I mean, it's easy to landbank the parking, the lots in the back of the buildings, you can just not build it.
Not pile, yeah, but the ones down the middle, where would it go in the future? Even blow buildings in, yeah.
Really, it's hard to landbank that in the middle.
It's a, what's a lot of parking, and I'm for more creative, interested in more creative, you know, like I said, I could transfer of it somehow. Well, that's all I have for tonight. That's about all I can do. Um, but I would, I'd still, like, I know I've mentioned this to you before, because, um, you know, that at some point, I, I don't think it's inappropriate to ask for, you know, a, uh, possibly a, a planner to work on design with, you know, with the board. It's, it takes a lot of time to do this stuff, as everybody who's participating in this, you know, knows, and it's, um, and I think if you get somebody that knows New York law, and knows how to design, and knows that could, you know, it could really, you know, help and advance both the board and the project, so, so I had to, then I needed to just put that back out on the table.
As you know, I.
Okay, I think, you got any questions for us? Not that.
I, I have a question.
Not that it should preclude you from ever asking a question during any time.
Any more design review, or that are?
Oh, you're gonna stop me from going now? Depends if you get somebody else.
No, I, I have a question. The question is, we'd like to ask you to close the public hearing.
We're gonna discuss that now, and, um, see where we wanna go with that, so I just, let me, that's for the board deliberation. You can sit and listen, it's on TV, but.
I, I have, I, I only have one question. I don't expect an answer this evening, uh, but, um, one of the things we will address in the FEIS process, per all of the comments and input we're getting, is, uh, LEED versus green building, and the green building standard, and, uh, we've made a presentation to you early on on that, uh, but there are aspects of that that are quite important for us moving ahead, um, but, um, my basic question is, is do we, do we need further discussion, that's beyond the purview tonight, of, of those two, of those two programs? Uh, what, what we are hearing, in all honesty, through the public hearing process, is that there's, uh, uh, an, an under-education, if you will, in green building standards in general. Uh, it seems like there's only one standard being taught, one standard being wrote, written about in the newspapers, uh, one standard in a lot of people's minds, and, um, it is extremely important, if not for the project, but, as I think you know from me personally, that there be other education process on green building standards if you're gonna hold us to one.
Well, I do think I would agree with that.
So, that, that's not for tonight's discussion, apparently, given the hour, but I will still continue to offer up, uh, you have a memo from me on the development of the two standards.
Yeah.
Uh, the development of those two standards is absolutely critical to the fundamental use of one standard or the other.
I would agree that, I think the public does seem, uh, people keep saying it's being built to LEED bronze standard, but it's not that, it's not, there's no such thing.
There's, there's a lot of crossover in, in the discussions and things of that.
But what we've definitely heard is that, you know, you're building it to National Green Building Council, National Green Building Standards.
It's the ICC standard, green building standard.
Yeah, bronze level, and there's a lot of levels above that, and if it was, as people keep saying at public hearings, if it was a SUNY new false building, it would have to be built to a LEED silver level. So, I mean, even if we do have, and I've read, um, I mean, I spoke all about the, um, different standards and things, um, it'd be great to have, uh, you know, a, an education program about that, but the factor means you're still at the bronze level, which is many, many levels below, where the, it's the comparable standard would be. And, I mean, that's what I keep hearing with the.
You know, I, I think, yeah, and I think, you know what, um, I think we'd like to kind of keep that open. I think, early on, we asked that the analysis, that you do the comparison between LEED silver and what you're proposing. I think, um, as pointed out by the building inspector, that you'd need to do Energy Star for your buildings in addition to, and I, and I think my initial research has, has revealed, although I want you to tell me, that the National Green Building Standards coupled with Energy Star might actually exceed the LEED silver requirements. Um, but I think that, um, I'd like, I, I don't wanna have to do the, we've asked, I guess, that that be included in the DEIS, that there's actually an analysis done.
In the FEIS.
The FEIS, excuse me, that, that you actually do the analysis for us, of, you know, why you think, what you have, because I'm familiar with LEED silver, I'm familiar with LEED neighborhood development, I, you know, I personally would like to see living building challenged, and I don't think anybody's gonna be up for that, but you wanna do a comparison on that, that'd be great, that'd be great.
If I'm hearing, if it's sufficient for you to do the comparison as part of the FEIS, we can certainly do that.
I think, I think we've asked, I guess that was asked, I mu, I don't know, a long time ago, I'm pretty sure we had asked.
It was asked a long time ago, and we repeated it, I think, when you weren't here.
Next draft, yeah.
But, but again.
It's on the table, there's issues that have to be resolved.
I mean, I'll, we'll still be looking at it, maybe we can have another discussion at, at the next meeting then, because I had a malfunction. I have some research on this, but I couldn't get access to any of it tonight, so.
Well, with regard to educating the public about, with all of the conceptions and misconceptions people have, having a chart, you know, just sort of showing if it's positive, comparisons.
I guess, somehow, I'm feeling if, if that was straightforward enough to do that, it'd be on the table now.
It would've been done.
Well, that's, uh, I mean, I wanna clarify, it's, it's our job to address what you, as the lead agency, need in order to determine whether the impacts have been met and, and mitigated. Uh, and, and my first interest is educating you, uh, on that, and, uh, but that was properly stated at the very end. There is no spreadsheet that you can do parallel to these two programs. There, there truly isn't, and it's more important to understand how, how both those programs were developed in the bigger picture of what you're addressing when you address the impacts. But if it's sufficient that we move forward and put that in the FEIS, it's already on the table for all of the public comments, that's fine.
And maybe we can leave it open as an issue to discuss at one of our next meetings. I'm not sure it'll be at the next one, cause I forget when the next one is, but.
January fourteenth.
Okay, that would be fine, to discuss it at then.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible to not demonstrate the standards by comparison, but to demonstrate the outcome, if the buildings are built to one standard or the other? If, for example, they would have a certain amount of energy consumption, they would have a certain amount of.
Well, you could take, you could take this design, you could run it through LEED and say, okay, we think it would stack up this way, you know, kind of like a LEED charrette. So, you do LEED charrette, and say, okay.
You could, I guess, but unless you, if you don't commission it, though, how do you actually know what the result is?
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying a design basis would be equivalent to whatever, and then you do the same thing, the design basis is equivalent to the other one, and then if there's an understanding that it's, stands in these two relative positions, then there might be an agreement that, okay, prove through the project that you achieved one or the other, you know what I'm saying? At least you'd have a design basis, you'd know where it's going to go in both cases, and you'd have to deliver on something.
Yeah, I think some of the, you know, like, for example, some of the LEED points are really weak points that you're giving, you know, you're giving credits for, you know, you happen to be in SUNY New Paulson, you're a mile from campus, so you're gonna get points for that. I mean, those to me are the weak, just gimmies, and those are like.
You get a point to hire a LEED architect.
Right, those are.
That's the stuff that doesn't give anything.
No, so I think, but, but I think when you get to energy consumption, stormwater, waste reduction, you know, some of the bigger things, if you could hit on the big things and how they, you know, the little gimmies, we, we know what, what's happening.
You're gonna be the easier ones to compare anyway, the ones that are, got some meat in them.
You, you had items like Taylor recycling that you mentioned earlier, I had an issue with the LEED building with Taylor, because Taylor is a hundred percent recyclable facility. LEED took serious issue because, um, Taylor takes all the dumpsters and dumps them into one big pile, and they sort it out, and they recycle everything. LEED did not cut that.
They want it separate, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're all in separate containers, so, we couldn't get points because a hundred percent recyclable facility didn't work exactly like LEED wanted it to.
Except, I think on, I think on Old Main, I think the way that it was, it was done, I had some peripheral involvement in it, I thought that the way that they did it on campuses, they separated there, they dropped it off as separated material to a.
But then it gets dumped back in again.
No, cause it came in, it came in separated so that they could just take it and put it someplace, and it may not have been tailored, I thought it was tailored, and I thought it was separated at source, and then taken down, the dumpsters were specific and identified, so they didn't need to combine it to take it apart, it was already given to them in separate piles.
Right, no, what I'm, my point is, Taylor, their plan only has one area that they've been dumping everything back in.
But, right, but they're separating it there, so it's already separated.
Right, and then it separates back out.
Right, but if it's separated already, here's wood, and it comes in a bin, it's, here's wood, they're not gonna dump it to pull it back out, like they used to, okay, but, but, okay, I get what you mean.
It was, it wasn't my intention to, to, to get into the, sort of the nitty.
Yeah, this does tie in, though, with how, how this works with the colleges' plans, though, because conceivably, after the forty-six-year lease is up, they might acquire these buildings. Do they have to consider the energy efficiency of the buildings they will be obtaining, and should they in some way, at least at the outset, meet the same requirements that they're required to have in the buildings that the state builds on the campus?
Yes, um.
Do they have to match?
That's, that's a great speculation, because first, they would have to acquire the land from the foundation, which is a separate entity.
Yeah.
Uh, and that would be, could be an agreement.
So, it might actually never become part of the campus.
Yeah.
Be owned by the college.
The foundation will make a determination even as to whether it wants to accept. It could always, like Open Space does it, they will accept a donation and sell it, because it doesn't fit into the long-term strategy and, and plan, and they use the funds for that purpose. So, you could donate land to Open Space and wind up, or Nature Conservancy, which happened down in Woodbury, they sold off the property, and it was eventually developed. It's not, you know, you can't really anticipate that, but.
But that's where you come in to help us lock it in.
Oh, I thought you came in to speculate.
I, I needed to ask, ask the question for a couple of reasons because of my own personal schedule in the beginning of January and see where we meet, educate and on and on. It wasn't my intent to get into some of the details here, comparative details, but I think the importance is that you know from our end that we were requested to enter into a green building program that would have a verification process, third-party verification, so that all of the things we say we're going to do along the lines of green have some, some tests associated with them. And, and right now that the two best programs out there are either LEED or the NGBS and there's a lot of reasons why NGBS.
The two most popular programs.
Yeah, I mean, there's hundreds, but there's, the, the fact of it is, is we understand the need within the SEACER process to be put to a test in a verification process. What I need to somehow get across is which is the most appropriate. Because the discussions to date on, we just want to go NGBS because it's cheaper and all of those things are, are not the factor. I'm just, I'm reacting to input. We very seriously are looking which is the best program and both programs are identified by the state from a green building reimbursement standpoint and the laws that were put in those places. I just need to know if, if doing it at the FEIS process is fine, that's good. If there's something interim that we need to do, I can. My feelings that we should be teaching in our universities other good programs than LEED is not for this table, so.
There may be a require, you know, educating, obviously we need it from the FEIS. But there may be an opportunity, we've got to figure out schedules and things of that sort, to come and chat specifically about that topic for an educational board, what it really means, when, from a development point of view, this program has this, this program has that, but I agree.
There are some articles actually that have done a comparison, I just don't know. Yeah, there's, there is, there is some literature on that, I just, I, like I said, I couldn't pull it all together.
Well, I, I mean, I, if you want more, I can give you plenty of articles. But I'm trying to make it specific to the project and which is the most appropriate.
Yep.
The applicant does have a website for Park Point. It is something which you can post materials to if they are specifically relevant to a, I mean, the applicant controls it, but you can put materials on it, for example, like the memo, that they try to explain some of these similarities that are not really differences. And, you know, it could be an educational resource, so you might want to consider that.
Okay. We're really brain dead. I do appreciate you taking the effort. And the, and the car knows the way now, you only have to put on automatic pilot and just go.
It does itself.
It drives itself. Watch the trees grow along the park. But we try to form up and try to get you information on where we want to go next time.
On the fourteenth.
And be more specific about, you know, the areas that we're looking at. One of the things that I'll probably work with Dave on is really take a look at the comments that we receive, the transcripts that we receive and get the, and you probably have seen it too, the scorecard. Where are the high, high points that we're, we have? Where are the big, high issues, what are the things that we're looking forward to, I'll put, solve those or mitigate them or address them? What are the issues that are associated with them and how do we handle that? So I think we'll try to put together, I'll call it the top ten, but break it down into specific areas and how we, what are some of the mitigations? Some of the possibilities to address those issues rather than, you know, do the scattergun approach, kind of focus it down on it. But, you know, we'll exchange that and then get up some topics for the fourteenth. That would be meaningful that, okay, let's, let's take a look at this. What are you, what are you going to propose in the FEIS? Are we going to be comfortable with that? This is what the, you know, industry says, this is what we said, this is what we're going to probably write in that and is that satisfactory? And then we say, yeah, I think that will take care of that issue, then we can move on to the other ones and solely fill in the blanks on, on responses to some of these things going in the FEIS. I don't want to, I don't want to receive the FEIS and say, oh, this is all brand new, we didn't even discuss that one, oh, that one's a new one. You know, so it's kind of filling out that whole document. I know you've gone through it and, but I think just being on the same wavelength with the board is what they, and if you think others are, you know, more important or you have, or this one's close to solution now, let's move that to the top to get it off the list. Let's have a little back and forth on that, so by the time the fourteenth rolls around, we know what issues we're going to talk about and where we are in the FEIS, at least mentally. We're on a back of an envelope basis.
So like are we distributing that list to the board?
Yeah, oh yeah. Okay.
So what about the public hearing, are we?
Well, we can have a discussion on a public hearing.
Right.
I'll start with Tim.
Michael, do you want input from us on the public hearing?
No.
Can I just say just a couple of things? I'd just like to make a few points about public hearing. This, the public hearing started for this process in late October and has been carried through until now, December ten. During that time, numerous notices have been placed in the New Pauls Times, the E N B has had published notice. In addition, we mailed notice to, I believe, a hundred and eighty-six different people, twice. You can see how many people have been here, I think the issues are the same issues that keep coming up. I think if we talked for ten minutes, we could come up with most of the major issues right here at this table. And I just want to point out to the board too, and I don't know, I know you know this, Michael, I know George knows it, but there, you have some people that have been through this E I S process for the first time. If you close the public hearing, it does not mean that's the last time for public comment. There's a, there is a public comment period associated with the FEIS also. Our job, after three years of review, when you want, is to take all of those comments and coalesce them and put them back in front of this board. That's what we want to do. There's, there's been a lot of information to the board given by us, a lot of information by the public and a lot of information just coming from the board. And I do think that's all a good, a good process. But an endless open public hearing, I don't think serves anybody because we can't get you the information that you need while that process is going on. And there is an opportunity beyond this for more public input. That's the only thing that I would say is, and I know that there has been the sentiment expressed that the project begins at the public hearing. That, in my opinion, is a mischaracterization. I don't think that's where the project starts. The project starts with seven volunteers who do this for free. They come here every meeting and listen to developers and listen to the public and listen to people from the town and listen to lawyers and have to take all that input and make sense of it. And that process has been going on for a long period of time. And I, I think to some degree it's a disservice to the planning board to say that it starts at the public hearing. It started a long time ago and the public hearing is a step along the way and it's not the last time that the public will get a chance, that's.
When is the last time before the FEIS? I mean, I would say in contrast, I, well, I don't think anyone's arguing for an endless public hearing, that would be horrible. But I know for me, as volunteer, I've read the DEIS so many times and every single public hearing, I hear things from the public that I'm like, wow, how did I miss that? I had no idea and it's, it's incredibly valuable to me and, you know, if we, I know.
But are they new issues, I guess, that you're hearing?
Well, yeah.
Because I'm not hearing any new issues.
This time, just this time, we heard about the Loopus, totally missed that, I don't know, just, yeah, I feel like there's new issues every time. I don't know, I feel like what's the harm of extending it another month until after the holidays are over?
George, George, I, I know, but George, I do, George.
Well, I would agree with Michael to the extent there are opportunities for input upon the environment, upon the environmental aspects of the project. And then there is also a site plan process, which at the board's option may be, there may be a public hearing then. So the, and the zoning board will be having a hearing on the variances. So there are different opportunities for public input.
Yeah, it is hard to get the word out about those, you know, there's notices in the paper and everything, but I feel like right now, there is kind of a groundswell of interest in this project. And if it's in the paper, the public hearing is closed, the public will say, you know, well, that's that.
It's certainly an opportunity for, I mean, you can't, you can lead a force through order. You can provide the information both in terms of the meetings, websites and other, you know, using other sources to say, here's what we are doing if we close the public hearing at this point on the DIS.
Yeah.
Here is what we anticipate going forward, here's an opportunity, because the public has the same impediment in a sense that you do. They're getting, they're looking at DIS, they see issues and they're identifying the issues, they're not getting a response.
I understand that, yeah.
So from their standpoint, why is the DIS not responding to my questions? It's not designed to do it that way. It's supposed to be a one cut where you get all the comment on the DIS. You afford the applicant or you can do it yourself, but generally it's the applicant who prepares the draft of the final document, the response to that. And then you go through a process of review and discussion on those responses. You don't get to the responses until you conclude this part of the process. Because the, the E I S process is intended to be a linear kind of thing, not one where you're revisiting the DIS, making it better, eliminating issues, providing additional information in the DIS and then closing that hearing and going on to the FEIS. So that there's.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it's, it's the way it's designed to do. On the other hand, if there is information that you really think ought to be discussed with the applicant before the FEIS process is fully engaged, there are opportunities to do that too. It's, it's not black or white, but it is intended to be linear as possible and it's really a judgment call. If there's issues that have been identified in the process, it requires more information before you can really conclude this is what we got and this is where we're going with it.
The potential for closing the hearing comes with a ten day extension for written comments as well.
You can extend it as, you can provide written comment, well, that's part of the concern issue, you're hearing people
Yeah.
give you oral commentary that really could be written and provides you with the same degree of information. So I think certainly you can have an appropriate, coming up on the holidays, it may not be a ten day period. You may want a longer period to give people more flexibility. But you do, you do run up against that challenge of, if the DIS is sufficient to provoke public comment and you've got the public comment, you're going to have to provide the framework, the context in which the response is approved.
Yeah.
And that's the FEIS.
I understand.
So, and if there are new issues which are identified at the FEIS stage, SEACER does provide for a supplement to be filed with respect to a brand new issue, brand new impact, that has not previously come to the attention of the board through and off all of the applicant or the board. I mean, people can't hide stuff and then say, oh, look, now I found something new. But if, if the circumstances are such that it's new information that just became available, there's a change in the project design, they moved the, moved the clubhouse and the factory housing, you can, you can analyze that either in the FEIS or in the supplement on the IS, depending upon the stage you're at. So there are, there's techniques and tools you can use to accommodate legitimate concerns that come up in the future.
Question, tonight we asked about SUNY's participation in the project. If we close the public hearing, would we be able to readdress that if they didn't, you know, come up, you know, come into the program like we've requested? To give us information of how they're going to be involved with these people? Would we be able to, to reopen the questions to them? Because it seems to me that a large part of the public is concerned over the college's role in, in this project. So if we happen to close the hearing, would we be able to readdress that?
You, you, well, the applicant will be responding to those comments. If the applicant's response is not satisfactory to the board, you have the opportunity to revisit the issue. You have the opportunity to rewrite the FEIS this minute and respond to it in a way that you think is adequate. If, if you're concerned about SUNY articulating the specific nature of its interaction in a way that you can, I mean, if the president turns up and says, I think SUNY will do this, that doesn't mean that college has made that commitment. You need some appropriate level of assurance from duly authorized entity that says this is what SUNY will do.
Which I think they're just fairly starting.
Well, that's part of the analysis, I mean, we still don't have the answers to the questions that were raised, but that's part of our analysis and that's part of the requirements that we're looking for.
Yeah.
To the extent you identify something that's needed and isn't provided at this point, it can become a condition of the approval that, or a combination of a mitigation measure and a condition of approval. So a memorandum of understanding with SUNY indicating the police force is available, that there are no legal impediments to the police force doing, that there is commitment on the part of the administration to provide that in the event it's for some reason not available. This is a different issue that would be revisited at that point. Because you can't, you can't really articulate all the hypotheticals, all the contingencies in your document. But what you can say is, this, our findings and determinations are going to be based on what SUNY tells us their campus police can or cannot do.
I think the problem with this is we're not asking for someone to articulate all the possibilities, we're just asking for some sort of response from SUNY, which I think is just making this an incredibly difficult process for us as a board and for this applicant. And, and I, I just, I, I feel like that, that's my issue with closing the process. It's like, you know, the one guy from SUNY who said anything, he said, well, I think you should be really careful about misinformation and, and don't prolong the process. But they're the ones who are prolonging the process by, by not using this forum to have a discussion and to respond to what the public is saying or, or to correct, you know, what, what the public has issues with. They're the ones who are like, they're, they're like non-response is making this incredibly difficult.
You've got to keep in mind this is like pushing, this, this process is very much like pushing rope. Very hard to get it to go exactly where you want, but.
But they, they obviously want this project and the, and their, their response is, well, it's a great project and the commuters need it. That's it, and then I think that's what that one college kid was trying to say is that he feels like several people from the public are artic, are articulating a variety of concerns and the, and SUNY has been silent. SUNY has only.
To be fair too, Tim, at the first, at the first public hearing, a lot of people from SUNY spoke.
Yeah.
They, they didn't speak since then.
No, but all they, but all they say is we support the project.
I, I, what, what we need, what we need to still do to satisfy this board is coordinate, we have to coordinate with this.
We need to do it straight up.
But I don't think the public hearing doesn't need to be kept open for us to do that.
We'll throw one more thing out, if we get, I mean, we're getting a fiscal consultant and possibly a planner, environmental consultant. So it seems to me that it would be prudent to wait for their report so the public can look at it and then keep the public hearing open till then.
No, no, from my point of view, we have a whole list, that's why we went through design, that's why we went through all these things. We have issues. One of those issues that we still have to resolve is fiscal impact. Okay?
Yeah.
We get that, we resolve what that is, we put that into the FEIS.
Yeah.
Then we put it out to the public and say, this is what we, we did, or this is what the independent want. What are comments, what are issues that go forth on it? In the final, not in the beginning, if you keep the public hearing, if you keep the public hearing open on the DEIS until we completed the fiscal impact, that we're adding months to this review process.
But I think that's what, I think that's what we're all confused about, it's like we're only learning about this for the first time, is that, that this is just a, a several step process. And that it's perfectly fine to, to close the public comment for the DEIS because we can still, you know, hear from the public when we have an FEIS and, and we're only, you know, beginning to understand that.
I think what, what I would, what I would, yeah.
So can, can we articulate, like, as I, like, that's the point from earlier, if you, if, if you say, public comment is closed. If you, if, if you say, public comment is closed, then she's gonna be, you know, like, I think a lot of people are gonna, oh, the, the, the project's done. So why can't we explain, yes, public comment for the DIS is closed. However, you should anticipate public comment in response to the FEIS. Why can't we say that?
We can.
Well, then I think that needs to be communicated.
Well, that's the same.
This is the first time I'm learning about this.
Okay.
And you know what, we've asked, we've asked this.
And I think the public has no idea.
Yeah, they, they don't know it, and, and a lot of the board members, this group right here is all know. I mean, this group is older in terms of been on the board, been on the board longer, been on the board longer. Like, no, we, we're relatively, so when we asked early on about the fiscal impact, about getting a planner, about doing environmental stuff, you know, it feels like we're now here closing a hearing where some of us don't necessarily, and I'm a professional in this, I don't know some of the questions that I wanna ask that should have been in that DIS that we're closing. That's really, that's the problem that I have with the whole thing. We don't, yeah, and I, I know enough to be dangerous, but I don't know this process, period. And that, I think that's what's very frustrating probably to the four of us. I'm throwing you in on this topic. Okay, so, you know, because, because if we had some of those, um, you know, some of those other comments, then I guess I wouldn't be that concerned about where we are right this second, I guess.
What I, okay, what I.
Because you've allowed, you know, Mike, I'm sorry, just that we've left this up to, you know, lay board, great, that's great. We have great professionals. There's a couple of other supplemental people that we think we needed, such as fiscal, and I feel like we could've, we could use a planner, but that's, you know, my thing. But, you know, I think that would've assuaged all of our fears, you know, in terms of going forward because too much has been put, and it's, it's really big, it's really big, and I'm still going through it. I'm still going through it. So this weekend I spent a lot of time coming up with, if give me another two, I'll have another two-page list of things probably next time, but I can't spend that time doing that, you know, and I think that's, that's what. Yeah, and I think, you know, I don't see, uh, I don't see the big issue leaving it open for another two weeks or, you know, till after Christmas, because right now between the hurricane, between the push and everything, you know, what's, so we have a little bit of downtime over Christmas, and so give a date certain, close.
Elena, you're talking about written, written comments for, for.
I, I'm talking about just leaving it open till, give it a date certain.
Another public comment.
Till January nineteenth, maybe, and then say it's closing that night, and then it's done, because you know what? Then it's after, when we have time, I mean.
Why don't you just leave it open and not have a public comment?
I, I just don't know how that, I don't know how that's gonna address though your, your issues.
Yeah, you lost it, like, time, time out.
It'll give me more time to look at it and say, you know what, I'm.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me back up, let me back up. You have all the time in the world to look at.
Yeah.
Closing the public hearing on a DEIS does nothing to stop our review of the project. Our review of the hiring of who we want.
And what I'm saying is that I, the public is helping out my review.
I, I agree, I agree.
It does, it, it, it does, but it gets to the point of diminishing returns.
I'm not sure I have that point.
No, no.
Well, that's, that's.
That's the point that I'm assuming.
Looking at what we received tonight, I, I would have a disagreement on it.
We just have disagreements around.
But go ahead, do you?
Okay, I, I would say that we should clo, close a public hearing once we stop hearing new ideas. I think I heard at least three new concepts today that I wasn't familiar with.
Yeah.
And so I'd like to keep it open.
What about just till January fourteenth, the next meeting?
Yeah, let's, let's agree.
It's not endless.
A date certain, to a date certain, then, and say that, that's, we're done.
Well, I did, did this.
It's a compromise, yeah.
You want to comment, I mean, you guys have.
We have unlimited time is what we're hearing, to keep commenting all the time.
Yes.
Not just unlimited time, but unless the applicant responds to issues and concerns you have, it will be difficult for the FEIS to be accepted. So the applicant has reason to address your concerns. What I'm hearing is you want the public to help inform the process.
Why not?
Well, it, it's, it's a judgment call. If there is information coming from the public that's new or different, if you have some reason to anticipate that's going to happen.
Which, I mean, the coast of Peter's Point, yeah.
I, I did myself, I didn't hear anything new tonight, but we had thirteen, thirteen people spoke tonight.
You weren't listening.
Zero people spoke the last night.
Can anybody speak at this meeting? Because I, if Michael's gonna make comments, I'd like to make comments.
Yeah, if Michael's gonna make comments.
All right, all right, all right, stop.
That's out of order.
Yeah.
Hold it, hold it.
I don't think it's out of order for the applicant's attorney to speak and give, and give his opinion.
We're gonna, we're gonna terminate this right now. I don't need this at this stage of the game. Consensus, um, you wanna keep it open till the fourteenth?
Yes.
Could we keep it open but then not actually have a public hearing, just so?
I'm not sure we can do that.
Just so the community feels that, right, just so the community feels that they can continue to participate and contribute.
Why not have a public hearing?
Let's honor the public hearing.
Because I actually find that the written notices that we get from Kelly are.
Yeah.
You know, someone, you know, a lot of the people who comment and then, and then take the time to articulate something in a note, you know, those are the things that, because I do feel, I do feel, I agree with Peter that I, I even did hear a couple of things that I hadn't heard before. But the, the challenge of this was that, and a lot of people just kept repeating those same three things. And that's what makes this.
Torturous.
Normally, on a, on a, on a public hearing, on closing on a public hearing, you allow ten days or some period of time for written comments to come in subsequent to the closing of the public hearing. It would be the same thing in the FEIS. You would close the public hearing and allow comments on, before you start taking any actions to that.
So that's, that's really, I mean, that would be great tip, because plenty of people have asked me about where we stand. So then if I can just repeat what you just said, then I'm, then I'm fine. But I didn't realize that.
Better yet, put it on the website.
Can you?
Yeah, yeah.
But generally, at any type you close the, the IS, it's, Ruth mentioned ten, it's the holiday season. There's, there could be, you could leave the written comment period out to the end of the year and, and get that. And I agree with you, the written comments are the thought-out processes rather than off-the-cuff speeches, which is helpful for us. But again, from my point of view, I didn't hear anything that was major enough that would prevent those people from submitting written comments in the next three weeks. Basically, we're at, what's today, tenth? It's twenty-one days.
Yeah, but nothing happens at this point in time, you know, especially extra stuff. It's not a paid thing. People are, you know, taking time out in the holiday season to now write special comments. That, it's not, you know, it's not, it's like, this is like a funny season time. So I, I think that's, it's asking people a lot to say over a holiday, oh, by the way, you know, in your spare time, just write up comments. I think back on schedule, people, you know, busy people get more stuff done. I think when you're back working, you get stuff done, you know. I think it's a funny time period right now.
Well, I'll go back to the question again.
Every time we bring, every time we bring that stenographer here, it costs fifteen hundred dollars.
So keep it open, keep it open for the written, for the expensive process.
Keep it written open.
Keep, keep written open until the fourteenth, so that's an ideal amount of time.
That makes a lot of sense.
That makes sense.
And then it feels like it's still open and the public can still contribute if they choose to.
That makes a lot of sense.
And then not, in, instead of saying, keeping it open till the fourteenth and then having another ten days? Because that's what we usually, you know, that's, that's what, you know.
Or, keep it, the, uh, public hearing notice said it would be later of, uh, I, I think it said it would be open at least ten days after the close of the public hearing for comment, for the comment.
So we can, we can put any date.
Even up to the twenty-fourth, if there's your ten days, I don't know, you know, just, so it's a chunk of time. It's well beyond the holiday season.
Twenty-fourth of January, yeah. But then that's, then what's the difference of having a hearing on the fourteenth? Having it open and closing it on the fourteenth? Well, no, but having it still open though and then have a ten day, because then it's still closing the twenty-fourth of public comment.
Are we having a hearing on the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Well, that's what we're discussing, no.
The issue on the table is, do we close the public hearing, oral public hearing now, and allow for written comments to a date? Or, I gotta finish that, pass the sentence. Or do we keep the public hearing open to January fourteenth and allow written comments subsequent to that? That's the issue that's on the table, and I'm just trying to see, go ahead.
I would go for closing the public comments at meetings now, but keeping the ability to submit written comments until the fourteenth. And it might almost be a good idea if we could actually post, in a way, the comments we've received so that people could say, oh, that's already been asked. I don't need to bring that up, because I've, I just, I've been perceiving at, at our meetings that people are not only repeating comments that other people have been made, but they've been repeating them in a, a more passionate and impatient way because they perceive this as, as a.
Not heard.
Not being heard, and, and they're not being heard over and over again. I don't see any, how extending that helps. But the written comments, I think because they are written, are usually more to the point, more succinct, and easier to respond to because when we speak, we don't necessarily organize our thoughts as clearly as we do when we have to write something down.
See, you can argue that you're sitting at your computer, you get an email with a written comment, you read it, goes out of your head. You mean to make a note, you don't. You know, you work fifteen hours a day, you're a chocolatier, it's December, don't get me started. But then you come to the planning board meetings, you hear someone say something, it's fresh in your head. It seems like a more democratic process in some way, I don't know.
Oh, my brain works the other way. I hear people talk for hours and hours, and, you know, ten minutes later, I'm driving home, what, what was that all about? If I have something in a piece of paper, I can find it again. I can say, oh, yeah, I'm gonna underline this and I'll, you know, do something. I can put an asterisk by it.
What do you got?
I got, how about, how about this? What if we, what if we close the hearing, take written comments to the fourteenth, and on the fourteenth, we discuss what we've gotten? We have a discussion about some of the things that have come up, so that the public hearing is closed, the discussion is, oh, we have a discussion on some of the things that, you know, that either come up or if somebody's handing in a written comment that night, right, they can hand it in, but that we kind of leave it open for like, like, just a ramp, a discussion. That it's closed, and then we still take comments. That way you get what you want to, to be closed. The board is leaning towards leaving it open because we wanna make sure we have that, but it kind of saves that extra ten days that we're talking about. But it also gives us the opportunity, if we wanna discuss it on the fourteenth, if there's anything that we need to tie up or discuss that we discuss it minutes over, does that make sense?
Well, we could, we could, we could do that.
You could do, you could do that, but one thing that might be helpful for you and the applicant, perhaps the public, would be to not direct how the FEIS should be prepared so much as identify issues that, and the general expectation.
If we discuss it, you mean on the, on the fourteenth, George?
Yes.
Yes.
So you're giving, you're giving some sense that there's a general direction you would like the applicant to follow? Because they're preparing something for you now.
Right, right.
This is not, they don't get to decide. So there's not much point in having them go off in one direction. It's consistent with, say, the, the way it was discussed in the DIS, if you feel that was not where you wanna go with it. So the extent to which you can tell them, this is what we want for the lead versus the other thing. This is how we want it analyzed. You've given them some indication tonight, and you can give them more indication at the meeting on the fourteenth.
And we have just a discussion as to the general direction, but hypothetically, somebody comes in with, I wrote this tonight and I'd like to read it into the record, but it's my public comment for the board as you're discussing it tonight.
You're taking written comment, not.
Taking written comments.
Yeah.
So they're gonna hand us the written comment, we're gonna sit here and read it then?
No, it, it becomes part of, you're gonna have a, they're gonna get the pilot papers that are the, receive comment plus the hearing transcripts, and between Dave and the applicant, there will be some sorting out that takes place. So there's gonna be energy comments, transportation comments, fiscal impact comments, and then things within that that have to be responded to. A dozen people have talked about police. We don't need twelve responses, we need one response that summarizes that.
Understood, yeah. So.
The applicant needs to know where you wanna go with that, though, to some extent, because you're eventually going to make a decision about the FEIS and whether it reflects your assessment, not theirs.
Okay, so then hypothetically, on the fourteenth, then we have our categories, Dave organized at that point, and then we have a discussion that's open to the public, but it's a board discussion about direction and giving applicant direction and just a general, we can have a general discussion about what we're, where we're going, what we're doing. We don't open it to the public per se, but we.
When you say open to, the public is present.
Public is here, and they can listen, but it's not open as in they're gonna be making public comments other than shouting out things, but let's make believe they're not. But we're gonna just have a discussion, and I have a question for you about something, or Dave about something. We get clarification, we can do that and have that discussion at that hearing.
And I, I think Lynn was bringing up the point where can't we, so we're gonna inventory this collection of, of public comments, and can't we share the results of, of, of these comments with the public, saying we received X number of comments about transportation or environment or economic, and, and just so that there is.
On the fourteenth, yeah.
So, so, you know, so to respond to Lynn's concern that, that the public feels that they're not being heard, so would that be a way, like, hey, we are hearing what you're saying, and, and here's evidence that we're inventorying it? And, you know, we're killing two birds with one stone, because this is the applicant, applicant had described what they're supposed to be doing is taking those concerns and responding to them. So it's, it's like we're, we're doing what you're gonna be doing already, and then we're also providing feedback with the public, for the public.
I, I, I think that will educate the public as well as to how, what they can expect from the process as it moves forward, not just.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like a, a useful way to, to kind of consolidate all of these comments and.
Well, I, I still, you know, I, I see a lot of repetition. I mean, we all see a lot of repetition in the public comments. However, I also see some new stuff coming up that hadn't occurred to me before, and I think it's valuable to have that input. It's probably not everybody, in fact, most people will not be able to sit down or don't want to sit down and write out something. So I don't see any harm in keeping it open until the fourteenth, and then ten more days of fix, of written comments. I mean, especially since this is a holiday season, people are not going to write comments. It's, let's, let's, let's keep it open until the fourteenth. One more time, and, and announce, that's the last, that's the last public, that's the last session of the public comments. I'd really like to see.
Yeah, that's okay.
And that's it.
All right, let's put something up there, so we, you wanna put up your own, Elena?
We can watch, we'll keep the public hearing open until January fourteenth, and then written comments ten days after that, all in favor.
Second, second.
This, well, we had a discussion, all right. Our, you know, we gotta run and vote, I, um, on it, so.
And what?
Motion was made to keep the public hearing to January fourteenth and to close the public hearing on January fourteenth and allow ten extra, or ten business days for written comments.
And we have a second, so now we can.
So we have a second.
All in favor. I mean, this is how it goes.
Aye.
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 I'll oppose.
Okay, I'm opposed to it, but go ahead.
I didn't mean to push that door, I'm just tired.
That was carried five to two, so that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Democracy, I'm sorry.
All right, if I could, if I could see the board, just one minute after everybody leaves. It'll be quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
See you. Well, you only came once, were you here less than?
No, I was here, no, I was not, I was here.
I don't think so, I'll knock because you're getting, you're getting a great. I don't know if I wanna be here the fourteenth.
You're ready.
You're on the village board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I need you to find me information. Player board, have they received?
Are we waiting ten minutes before?
Yeah, I just gotta, I'll take two seconds.
And have they made it to thirty?
Is our meeting over? Should the TV guy?
Uh, and we're, we're adjourned. You can shut the TV off. Thank you.